The meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska...
Mark, can you hear me?
Oh, you move.
I can't hear him.
I know, but you move.
I'm not sure.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the meeting room on the east wall, if anyone needs to see that. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me mention a couple things tonight. I want to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. It's being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. Remember whoever wants to speak will need to be sure and come forward to the podium there in front of the microphone when you're recognized. We need you to state your name for the record and spell your name so the clerk will get it correct. Keep in mind, there's no swearing and no inappropriate language in any capacity. We all need to check our cell phones, try and be sure that they're all either turned off or on silent. I want to remind the commissioners that we need to speak clearly into the microphones so that we can be heard for the recording of the meeting. Somewhere along the line, whenever I think it's about midway, we'll plan on taking about an eight-minute recess about midway through the meeting. Mr. Jason Ocean is here tonight. He is an attorney with Douglas Kelly Firm, and he represents the county on civil affairs. We have had an attorney attending our meeting since about October, November of last year, and just to be sure everyone's aware that he is here in case there's any questions or whatever. Okay. The next item is the approval of the agenda or consider any modifications. Wondering if we need to consider modifications?
I've got a modification.
Okay, Charlie, we'll let you go first.
I would like to move the item that says, "Discussion regarding the relocation of tourism director Susan Beedham and more treasurer," ahead of the item that is just applied. We are going to discuss and consider moving the office of the tourism director tonight. And the agenda was put together on a timeline, so one item came in before the other, so I'm willing to move that discussion ahead of my agenda item, so we can have that discussion prior to the actual item.
That certainly seems appropriate that they should be flipped out, and that's what you're suggesting.
Yes.
Ms. Kelly, you had one?
Under Board of Equalization, rather than 10 motor vehicle exemptions for Regional West Medical Center, we're going to move it to seven.
Okay. Change the number 10 to seven.
Yes.
All right. So we have two recommendations to modify the agenda. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the suggested changes.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second, Deb.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the two modifications that have been mentioned. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right. So the motion's carried.
Can we get that on? Thank you.
So we'll go on to the next item. The next item says the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. We do have executive session towards the end of the meeting, but if anything else comes up along the way tonight that we would deem that we need additional executive session, we do reserve the right to do that. The next item is the consent agenda.
To make a move.
Go ahead.
We'll make a motion to accept it. I have to pull out one claim number on that one as well.
Okay. So your motion is to accept all the items on the consent agenda except for one item that you need to pull out?
That'll be claim number 02503235.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda other than the one claim.
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right. That motion is carried. So now we need to go back on the one item, and Russ, tell us about this item is for what?
It's for the culvert that Steve put in at rural. I'm the distributor for ace metals out of Carney, so now I'm going to go through your item, run it through my account, so all the base metals just go through these. Anyway, I had sold a tube for road and rural, County Road 5, or that's County Road 9, that's where County Road 9.
All right. So a potential conflict event. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve this item?
So I move. A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this item. Any discussion? We'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses, and Reisig abstained from the vote.
All right. The motion's carried. Okay. We'll go on then to the next item, which is building and zoning. We have a 4:30 public hearing to discuss and consider approval of an Ag Estate dwelling site. This is a request by Randy and Susan Kiesel, and Cody and Alexis Kiesel, located in Section 34, Township 21 North, Range 55 West. Should...well, let me officially open the public hearing and let you go ahead, Bill.
Okay. So the applicants, they're wishing to separate off the 9.3 acres. It's basically marginal use ground. It's cut off from the rest of the farm ground by ditches on the west and the east side, and it's a triangle-shaped lot. They want to do a reserve area of 71 acres to the north and the west there. So it already does have access off of the County Road W there. It's located basically five miles south of Gearing and a half mile back to the west, and it does meet the requirements of Section 5.101-13 specifically pertaining to Ag Estate dwelling sites, and the planning commission did recommend approval by a 6 to 0 vote at their last meeting on the 11th.
Let me say, this is a public hearing, and I would open it up if anyone is here this evening to give any comment on this item, either for or against. Seeing none, we'll officially close the public hearing and go to any comments or questions from commissioners. I had a couple questions for you. So when we...tell me the difference here between this and when we normally talk about 20 acres for a parcel. How does this...
Any time that you create a parcel that's under 20 acres, it has to go through approval.
Okay.
So that goes to the planning commission and the county board. So here what they did is they had 80 acres they started with, they're taking out nine, so it has to go through the approval process.
I see.
I can...
20 would have been automatic.
If they were over 20, and both sides, so you cut it off by 80, now you got a 60, let's say a 20.1, then they could have just went and did it, went through the registered deeds office and all that.
This requires a plat, right?
Yes.
And that's this plat that we have?
Exactly. It has to have a legal description and a plat.
Right.
That's through our subdivision regulations, and that's so people just don't go out and do a meets and bounds description, you know, about 800 by 40 over here. That way it actually has section corners or property pin set, and you can physically go out and find where the property lines are.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from commissioners? All right. If not, entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the Ag Estate dwelling site as presented.
No second?
A second, Deb.
Close the public hearing first.
No, I did already.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's all right. All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Meyer, a second from Mr. Blue. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. We'll go on.
I would move to move into Board of Equalization.
All right. Do we have a second?
A second, Deb.
So we have a motion and a second to move into the Board of Equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Russ, you got to pressure.
I guess I do. Guess I didn't want to go.
You have five yeses.
All right. Motion's carried. So we're in the Board of Equalization, first item, discuss and consider approval of seven motor vehicle exemptions for Regional West Medical Center. Heather?
So these vehicles have previously been exempt. They were missed on their form last month when I came up here and did the rest of their vehicles. These vehicles have a total tax loss of $1,185.60, and like I said, they were all previously tax-exempt, so I would recommend them.
Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the exemptions.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the seven exemptions. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Go on to the next item, discuss and consider approval of one motor vehicle exemption for Summit Christian College hearing.
So this vehicle is a 2019 Honda Accord. It is used to transport students and faculty to and from churches and college functions. It's a total tax loss of $142.80, and I would recommend approval.
Okay.
I'd move for approval.
I have a motion to approve the exemption.
A second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. All right, we need to...let's see, receive the tax list corrections. I believe we have those in our packet. There's two of them.
I'd move for approval.
All right. We have a motion to approve the tax list corrections. Any second?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Need a motion to go out of Board of Equalization.
I move that we go out of Board of Equalization.
A second?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to go out of Board of Equalization. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. The next item is road and bridge. Discuss and consider fuel bids. Steve?
It's that time again where we bid our fuel for the year. It's actually a couple months behind. We usually do it in January. Office of some advice, we were told to wait with the new presidency to see what fuel prices do, so that's why we're bidding it so late. We sent notices out to our five local, I'll call them our local vendors, Wesco, Penile, Co-op, Legacy, I guess they are, Newly Oil, Frenchman Valley, and Sat Brothers, and this is the first time we've actually received all five bids back from all five, so I thought that was good. Coming in with the low bid again was Sat Brothers at $253 for a gallon for our diesel, so and $259 for the unleaded. So I need a motion, I guess, to approve the Sat Brothers bid.
Well, I move that we...
Just a minute. I'd like to say something. You know, Steve and I talked about this earlier, you know, when we started bidding fuel for a year at a time, we were in a whole different situation. Fuel's really come down. I think fuel's moving down right now. I don't...we locked this in, I'm not sure that's...
I was told it's at the bottom.
You said it's at the bottom, so...
Yeah, that's why we're going ahead and bidding it now.
You were told what, Steve?
I was told the oil's hit its bottom from the experts. That's what they say is that it's not going to go down. Take that for what it's worth, I know, but this is 30 cents a gallon cheaper than last year's bid, and I believe the gas is probably 20 cents a gallon cheaper. $2.72, yeah, about 20, 15 cents cheaper for the gas, so...
What I'm watching, I'm just seeing the just start. I think it's coming down. Like I said, you talk to experts, I'm just saying what I'm seeing, and I see a...
The last two months, we've been buying it what they call off the rail because it was cheaper than the contract price. I was told by the experts supposedly that it's hit the bottom, so that's why we're going ahead and bidding it out.
On the unleaded, Steve, actually Legacy is cheaper on the unleaded, correct?
They are, but we only use, you know, 10,000 gallons of unleaded compared to 90,000 gallons of diesel, so when you do the price difference of how much you spend on diesel, that kind of wipes out that 10 cents a gallon for the gas difference.
What was your unleaded?
Legacy was at $249.
Just curious.
So, but the price difference in diesel between the two is 11 cents. Legacy was at $264, whereas Sat was at $253, so...
That makes sense.
I have a question on the unleaded part. Are they bidding 87 octane?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a question. So let's say we do buy this. Let's say it drops 30 cents cheaper at the pumps in town than what we're buying fuel for. Is the sheriff's department, or they have to buy the fuel for once, or they're going to go buy it? But we've still got to buy that fuel once we've set up a number of fuel.
This is just for the road department. This is just for the road department. That's not the county wide station. Yeah, they have their own bids.
Is there a requirement that we need to do this now, or what would happen if we waited?
No, you can wait. Yeah, you can absolutely wait, and we can keep buying it off the rail.
I'm kind of with Russ on this. I think, you know, everybody's expecting something to happen all of a sudden. Ain't gonna happen. It's not going to happen all of a sudden. We've only, we're only 45 days into this administration, and by all indications, I think things are going to happen to change, but it's going to take more than 45 days to do it. That's just... When Trump got out of office, you could buy decent fuel for $98 a gallon. But I'm, yeah, I feel like you, all of a sudden, whatever's going to happen does happen. If it does, and I hope it does, and we're 30, 40 cents a gallon cheaper at a local gas station than we are out of our own pumps, that's a concern I've got. But I know Steve's done a lot of research on it. I don't want to wipe all his research off either. I mean, he's done a lot of work on it, but I just personally have a gut feeling that I think it's going to come down. That's right. I can feel it.
That thing isn't going the other way, too.
I buy a lot of fuel, too, and I'm not locking nothing in.
When you say off the rail, you're talking about current quoted prices?
Right, the current price when we call for it. That's what they call off the rail.
And when you're buying this, you're always buying it full semi-loaded at times?
Pretty...just depends on the use for that month. We get fuel deliveries twice a month, so I would say no, it's probably not a full tanker at a time.
Okay, but the price is the same either way?
Yeah, and it includes delivery, whether they take it to Mitchell, Minotair, or even Lyman, so we have fuel there, so...
I think what you don't understand, it's not on the sheet here, is we're buying, what are you logging in, about 160,000 gallons, 150,000?
This contract's for 90,000.
90,000 gallons.
Because we're already in the March, getting to the middle of March.
We've got to buy 90,000 that twice, whether we like it or not. It's not for if we want to. We're going to buy 90,000 gallons of that.
It says in the contract it could be less, so we don't, if we don't use all 90, is the way it is. But if we go over, then they can charge us.
They charge whatever.
They can charge more if they want to, right. And last year, I believe we contracted 110,000, we used about 105, so we were under, so...
Is there any negotiation with this somewhere down the road if in fact the price does drop considerably? Not with this, we're not.
Probably not.
Probably not, since it's a contract, that'd probably be a question for a jury there, but I would say probably not.
Okay. I would really like to run this out just a little more, just see. First, that's what I would do if this was my business, my own personal money I was spending, I'd like to ride it out a little more. Like, like Ken said, I don't think that they totally, I don't think Trump's got everything in position where he wants it. I don't think it's going to go up. I don't feel like it is either. But, you know, I've been long before. And it could. It could be as long as I'm...but I'm betting, I'm going to bid as long as I can.
And fuel is one of those things, we don't even have to bid out, it's a petroleum product, so by...
And where are we at now per gallon? What we paying now?
We're about $261 with off the rail.
So not a whole lot of difference.
Right. Like I said, last year was $283, it was 30 cents higher than this year, so...
Certainly fuel dropped in the last week or so.
Right.
At local pumps.
What would happen instead of going out for a year, if we go out for a shorter period, at least for right now? Well, I don't know. I could really just watch it myself. If it was just my money, I'd just watch and see, and you know, if it looks like we're going to have enough dirt, we can jump in, you know, we can jump in tomorrow, we can jump in... It's not, it's not like we're paying 30 cents a gallon more now than we were last year.
Right.
We're already somewhere within those numbers.
Right, right.
So, you know, a dollar or a few cents one way or another is not going to, I don't think is going to make or break us, but I don't know. I wish I had a crystal ball. They don't work a lot.
So would you ask Steve to just rebid it in a month? Is that kind of your thought, or two months, or...
Well, he could probably go back to the same guy he got his bid from and just see if...
There's any updates?
And re-present that in 30 days, but we'll have a better...I just don't feel like I can arm around what it's doing. Exactly. But I know it's going down, and when something's going down, you know, I don't start, I can tell it goes back the other way. Well, as much as we use, it could be a significant savings for us. I think we need to take that into consideration. It's definitely a savings right now, but if it goes down a dollar, we got to buy 90,000, spend $90,000, and that's a truck, we could have bought a truck. I agree with you, Russ, I've just, I don't think it's going to go up. You know, it's with me, I don't feel it. I don't believe it's going to go up, and I think, again, only 45 days into this, all everything that's happening, but I know Steve's done a lot of research and a lot of legwork on it, and I don't want to put it all for the buck, but I just have a feeling it ain't there yet.
So I would only say that I don't have, we don't buy that much fuel, and I don't keep tabs on it a lot, so I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I'm certainly interested in hearing from Russ that buys a lot of fuel and anyone else that has more of an opinion on the item.
These guys buy a lot more than I do, but I watch my dollars pretty closely, I don't want to give much...if it's on a down market, I'm not buying.
Mike or Charlie, any opinion?
Years ago, when Russ was talking about this, his intuition was right. My intuition was wrong at the time, and I'll tell you where I feel, where I sit right now is, you know, I think there's going to be more pain before things get better. I don't know if that pain's going to last a full year, but I do see changes with this The other thought is, it's 30 cents less than last year, that helps with budgeting. We get to lock in something that was lower than last year. That is, that's the benefit I see. So I'm going to leave it at that.
I suspect if we decide not to accept this bid at this time, that I don't know how old it can get before we, you have to rebid it, right?
Well, tomorrow, the price will be different.
Well, once again, I mean, I don't think it matters on the timeline for how old it would have to get to bid because we technically don't have to bid it according to the county head, but we can buy it off rail all year long.
But if we choose to lock in, if we feel we've bottomed out and it could go up, that's where to jump on. But, you know, this is really hard to come off of a high market and get ratcheted back down to where, you know, you feel stable again, like it was before. I mean, it was a dirt move, I see.
Right, yeah.
We started, that was the first year we locked fuel in, and we made almost $300,000 every year. And there's a lot of things that are in the works. I just saw today where two more pipelines are maybe up and running short. Yeah, I've heard that, too, as well. And, you know... I don't know. I mean, it's a guess, is all it is, but as long as things are moving down, I, it's kind of like playing...
Russ, we can't hear you.
It's kind of like playing stocks. You don't just jump in as, you know, as things are moving up, I guess you... Unless you have my stock going. Well, yeah, that's, well, I wouldn't like that, too.
We can certainly keep buying it off the rail for a month and see where it's at at a time and go from there.
I would move that we table this. I'd like to go longer than 30 days. I'd like to leave 60 days on and then table again. Well, can we just say, let's check it every 30 days and see where we're at? Just Steve could just, he can make a call and have that... Whatever works best for you, Steve.
Okay, that's fine.
If we're on a decline, then I want to catch it as it's going down, not going up.
Let me ask Jason, Ken's making a motion to table, is that the best way to handle this, or reject all bids, or how do you want it to be done?
I think you reject it. Well, so it depends on how you want to handle it. If, as it's bid now, you don't want to move forward, you would reject the bid, I think would be the safer path.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to say that we reject this bid for now. Because if we don't accept it tonight, those prices are going to be different in two weeks, so we can bet on that, whether they're up or down.
Basically means we'll have to start over, run it's approach.
I think these folks will understand, right?
All right. So we have a motion to reject these bids. Do we have a second?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Thank you for your work ethic.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried, so we'll take a look at that at a future time, and maybe Steve, between you and Russ, you can stay in touch with that as when you think you might want to look again. All right. We're up to the general agenda items. This is received presentation regarding Region One Behavioral Health Authority, Holly Brant and Lisa Simmons. Come on up.
Hi, thank you for allowing us some time on your agenda.
Sure.
Today, we're just going to talk to you a little bit about the services that Region One provides, the areas of coordination that we're responsible for, and then the services that we have here in Scottsburg County. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, she's going to talk a little bit... and then the services that we have here in Scottsuffolk County. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, she's going to talk a little bit about the areas of coordination.
All right, so everyone should have had this four meetings ago in your packet, okay? All right, so I'm just going to read.
It's been a hard get together.
It has been. So I'm just going to read the, um, just the first paragraph, because I feel like it's important, and I'm just going to kind of give you the thirty thousand foot view of what Region One does, just for time's sake. Um, in nineteen seventy-four, the Nebraska Unicameral passed L B three oh two, the Nebraska Comprehensive Community Mental Health Services Act stating, "It is hereby declared to be the public policy of the state of Nebraska that all persons residing in Nebraska shall have access to mental health facilities, programs, and services." Then, in nineteen seventy-seven, L B two oh four was passed, adding substance use to that. Um, then on April fourteenth of twenty, or excuse me, two thousand and four, Governor Mike Johansson signed into law Legislative Bill ten eighty-three, which is now the Nebraska Behavioral Health Services Act. Um, so as part of, uh, Region One, we, our territory is the eleven counties of the Panhandle. Um, we were charged by our board to visit each county's commissioner meetings and just talk about what we do. A lot of people really don't know what we do. So the state of Nebraska is divided into six regions, we are Region One. Um, we are the regional administrative entity that's responsible for the development, care, and coordination of public behavioral health within our geographical area. Um, some of the region's responsibilities are to develop, maintain, and provide system planning, coordination, um, monitor, monitoring, excuse me, and leadership to our provider network. Currently, from Dawes and Sioux County, all the way down to Cheyenne County, we have fourteen network providers, which is a lot of network providers in our area. Um, part of my job, or my job, is to do contract compliance, provide technical assistance for those providers, um, help place consumers, um, in higher levels of care, which may be across the state, and then work with the Division of Behavioral Health to make a more cohesive, um, state behavioral health system.
Um, the services that we have available in Scottsuffolk County are the Professional Partner Program, the twenty-four seven crisis line, and that's for mental health and substance abuse, crisis response, community support, recovery support, assessments for both mental health and substance use, outpatient therapy for mental health and substance use, um, emergency community support, youth transitional services, supported employment, medication management for youth and adults, medicated assisted treatment, um, for opioids and amphetamines, day support, day rehabilitation, intensive outpatient therapy, um, post-commitment services, acute inpatient, subacute inpatient, emergency protective custody, and peer support. Our providers in Scottsuffolk County are Regional West Medical Center, Capwin, Sarah's House, Independence Rising, Mental Health Alliance, ESU thirteen, and Nebraska Panhandle Counseling Center. Um, total money allocated in Scottsuffolk County for services is one point four million, well, almost one point five million. Um, as you can see, I don't know if you guys have this sheet, on the bottom, in, um, twenty twenty, we served eighteen hundred and eighty-five consumers. In Scottsuffolk County, um, in twenty-one, we served eighteen hundred and eleven consumers, and then in twenty-two, we served fourteen hundred and eighty-four. And the reason for that drop is Medicaid expansion was implemented in, um, twenty twenty. And so some of the co-consumers that were receiving Region One services became eligible for Medicaid, so Medicaid became their payer source for those services. Um, Region One, we're a payer of last resort, so we, uh, can provide services for them if they meet financial eligibility or if they have no other payer sources, so no private insurance or no Medicaid. Are there any questions?
So this number shows it going down, but if we looked at the services provided by Medicaid, um, wouldn't we say that the numbers are going up for these services overall?
Yes, definitely. The state of Nebraska was tracking the Medicaid numbers, um, for a while, they've stopped doing that. But in our area, about, an estimated of about eight hundred consumers, um, that could have been region pay, were served by Medicaid. And so, yeah, if you totaled that with the fourteen hundred and eighty-four, then that would be an increase. Um, uh, COVID really kind of hit our system hard, and it's taken a while for our system to stabilize, and we are seeing an uptrend of people utilizing services this year. Um, we're drawing down our money, and we're very tight on our budget, and so I think these numbers will be even higher for F Y twenty-four and twenty-five.
The, um, so then my question is, if we go clear back pre-COVID and start looking at those numbers, it seems to me that some of the numbers I've seen previously, that those numbers just continue to go up and up and up. And, um, any thoughts as to the reasons of that, and is it just that we're more aware of, of, uh, some of these issues that we weren't fully aware of fifty years ago? Or what, what's the difference between now and forty and fifty years ago?
So I'm going to say that stigma is a huge thing. We now are raising children to mental health, it's just, we're treating it just like part of the body. And I really think that Region One and our, our partners have really worked hard to break down the stigma. We've started attending Bean Day for farmers. Um, that's a hard one, farmers are really hard, but it really truly is the stigma, I feel like, that people are more apt to comment, say, hey, I need help, or call for help.
They had a stigma before about reporting or saying that they possibly had.
Absolutely.
Mental illness or whatever.
Yeah, and there still is some of that, but I think there's a lot more awareness now too than there was forty or fifty years ago.
Okay.
Holly, I may have asked this before, but I don't remember. Do you work with the V A at all?
We don't really work with the V A, no.
Is there any reason that you don't?
Well, most of them would have other forms of insurance, and we are a payer of last resort, so we only work with those who wouldn't. Like, if they're getting insurance or help through the V A, then they wouldn't meet our qualifications.
We can help, however, to, a caveat, help with placement or finding services for those folks and help the V A that way, but funding those services where they have a payer source.
Yeah, the V A has their own system for behavioral health.
So they, one of the things that I know the V A does do is, is the finding somebody to give the help necessary. And in some instances, it takes a long time to get it done.
And I have had some calls from the V A director with some specific situations where he just didn't know where to go, and, you know, we made some connections and referrals and assisted with that.
So if you're, if you're notified, then you, you get somebody worth whatever help is necessary.
Yeah, we try to at least connect them to whatever services that we can.
You know, they need a referral, if, if they used you, and I guess my question is, is do you accept the referrals from the V A?
We don't, so we don't take referrals. Usually what happens, um, is someone will call and they're needing assistance with placing someone, like maybe in a residential treatment facility, and Lisa's the one that handles that. Then we help coordinate getting them to that placement, but we can't pay for the placement, does that make sense? So that's a kind of a coordination role.
It wouldn't even have to be at that level, somebody's just having an issue.
They could call the region, we will say, hey, what is the issue, we'll help fill the call, we'll get them to where they need to.
But then, but then we're back to those folks, and, and you talked about insurance. If you don't go to the V A, then the V A won't take care of it, so then it's, it's on your insurance or your, your checkbook to take care of it. And that, that's getting back to my original question, is that if you get a referral, or if the V A contacts you, and if it's a referral from them, the V A will take care of it.
Yeah, and then we can help connect them to the services.
And they, and they have a system, but it's not as good as what everybody seems to think it is, which is why I, I, and we could talk about it later, about maybe becoming more connected, I guess, with, with local V A there.
Yeah, we would definitely be open to that, and we, like, Lisa facilitates a lot of, uh, consumers who are on Medicaid, getting them into placements and where they need to go, because that is one area of our responsibility, is that coordination piece, whether we can pay for the services or not.
Sometimes it's as simple as being able to talk to somebody.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's not available, you still have that issue going on and nobody taking care of it. Okay?
Well, I know I participated in a couple of trainings this last year, the last one was peer support, and I think Brandy coordinated that.
Yes.
And then we had the first responders, I think, back here, thinking, I don't know, but it was very good training. Uh, and we are going to organize a Western Nebraska Peer Support Group for first responders, so, um, thank you guys for giving up that opportunity for our first responders.
Brandy's our, um, Justice Services Coordinator, that's a fairly new position, but her whole role is, um, liaison between the mental health world and the law enforcement, um, E M T first responder world.
Because that's where you run into a lot of stigma, and you do run into agencies sometimes who are a little reluctant to go over budget that they need to, to take care of some of their people most of the while, so.
Yeah.
That, that is changing. Uh, I do pastoral counseling, and there was a stigma for a long time to avoid psychiatrists, avoid the secular part of mental health. That has all changed now, it's been changed for quite the last fifteen years, and so that's, that's a good thing.
I think Mike mentioned something that's really important, and that's, again, the relationship with your organization and the fact that the mental illness is really a, um, concern and something that our law enforcement people deal with all the time. Um, not only our sheriff's department, at our, uh, detention center, and, um, to me, you know, being a novice in this and not, not knowing everything that you guys know, I say, what, how can you tell the difference sometimes between criminal activity and mental illness, which causes it, or vice versa, or whatever the case is? But, um, we certainly appreciate what you're doing in an effort to help law enforcement across the county and across the Panhandle, um, because it's a big deal for them, and they're dealing with it every day, I know, so.
Yeah, and another thing we're really excited about is we got permission from Department of Behavioral Health to provide a couple of services in jail to, um, inmates who are there, so we can provide outpatient, so the counseling for mental health or substance abuse, um, medication management, and then I O P. And so Brandy's been working hard with all of the jails across the region to get that set up where our providers, if they need it, can go into the jail and provide those services in the jail to the inmates.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? Come on forward. Come on forward.
Come on up right to here.
Right here.
State your name.
Hi.
Spell it.
My name is Debbie Wagner, D E B B Y W H E N E R.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, um, I just had a question, you said that Brandy's position was new and was kind of a liaison with the police department and, uh, first responders, that kind of thing. Is she doing any sort of victims advocate for the families of situations that happen?
No, that's not really her role. Her role is more like coordination of services, um, for law enforcement, E M T, first responders, coordinating services for consumers in jail, um, we have a reentry specialist in Scottsuffolk County Jail, so trying to help people who are coming out of jail, reintegrate into the community. So versus more higher level, but not that, like, you know, one-on-one, um, working with victims.
I'm just curious, um, I just feel like there's definitely a need for that in the area, um. Sometimes there's a lack of communication between the police department and the families of the situation that's happening, so I think that's an area that perhaps could use a little more.
We're writing grants all the time, so.
And another thing I would suggest is if you have somebody that you're like a compassionate person, really don't know what to do with this person, and they need help, just call the region, ask for money, or, or, or. Thank you.
Debbie, Debbie, we do have a victim advocacy office in the courthouse, so there's a, that service is provided by the county.
When does that come into play? Like, where, how does that happen?
Which I really don't know, but how they get called upon, I don't know. I know if someone needed the resource, they, they would be forwarded to this lady, her name is Isabel, I believe.
So does law enforcement make that referral then? Is it?
I think it can.
With charges or files, it's my understanding.
Oh, thank you, Tammy Frye's here, she can help. I like, um, we have, this lady works in the courthouse, used to work for the county attorney, well, still works for county attorney's office.
Debbie, my family was, did use the victim advocacy office, uh, a couple of years ago. Very helpful.
Tammy Frye. Um, when a report is made through the county attorney's office, it automatically gets forwarded to our victim's assistant, and she reaches out to the victims at that time. Sometimes they're not willing at that time to speak to us, but she's, she tries to keep in contact with them and offer services whenever they need to. And that's married, I do.
Oh, thank you.
I guess I'm just curious as to, like, what the definition of the victim is, what the definition of what it is that's supposed to be living in a court, that may be giving the services, that, that kind of situation, like, I.
Well, all of ours comes from police referrals, although if somebody comes in and needs protection or aggressive order, we can help with that as well. So a victim could be any crime, domestic abuse, child abuse, sexual assault, theft, burglary.
Right, I'm talking about like the families of when something happens, not necessarily the family themselves.
Um, I mean, it just depends on what the family needs, as far as resources, and that's what something you have to talk with. I know capstone has the services of the child's beneficiary, or capstone has the seat for the child and for the family. And they now have an annual service, so.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Any other discuss, hang on, just, any other discussion? All right, um, commissioners, anything else? All right, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
So I'm assuming this is a no action needed item?
Correct.
And simply got a report, correct?
Correct.
All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is discuss and consider approval of the Scottsuffolk County Detention Center Medical R F P from Sheriff Mark Overman.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Uh, we've had, for, I've been running the, uh, the detention center now, overseeing it for about six years. And during that time, we've had the same, uh, we contract with a company called American Correctional Healthcare. They're a nationwide company, they're very well, very well-known, and, uh, you know, there, there's, uh, other places in Nebraska that use them. But, uh, and we haven't gone out for an R F P mostly because we've looked around at, at prices at other places and thought that they were competitive, but we, we suffered a, they gave us a significant increase this year. As you know, because we bring a budget to you showing that happened, and basically what they did this year was they made a corporate decision that they were only going to use registered nurses. And understand that they're nationwide, and so they studied this, and, and so they had a lot of arguments for why they did that. But, and some states require that, but some do not. Nebraska does not. And we, we had L P Ms, licensed practical nurses, that worked for us, that we were very happy with. And of course, they're overseen by a physician, and they're overseen by a nurse manager, and we did not have, in the whole time I was there, uh, with them, I was never disappointed in what they did, because when they needed help, they sought the help. When somebody needed to go to the hospital, because they were having problems, they went to the hospital. So, so we, we raised the issue with A C H, and we didn't want to lose our L P Ms, and basically we lost our L P Ms, and now they hired our ins, and because they hired our ins and they make more money, they, they raised the price for us fairly significantly last year. And so by the time we found that out, it was too late to go out for an R F P. And so, so we, we, uh, so the price went up. Well, so now it's time. And, uh, so when that, so we want to go out for an R F P, and that's what we're asking you to do, and the R F P specifically says that they can hire. And the RFP specifically says that they can hire LPNs. So, we don't know what we're gonna run into. There's, there's other companies out there. I'm not gonna say they're better. I've visited with sheriffs and people that manage jails that have ACH and some of them are happy and some of them aren't. And our, I'll just tell you, our, our experience with ACH has, has been good. It's been good. They're, they're pretty responsive. But they're, and we think they're a little expensive, but maybe they're not, but we don't know unless we do this. Uh, we did an RFP on our food service a year ago and we saved some pretty significant money by doing that and got better service.
Mark, does the uh, does the jail standards require anything? Can you rephrase that? Could you use something less than, I, I hate to use that term, but not an LPN, but maybe a nurse's aide or somebody that's in a higher position?
I wouldn't use anything less than an LPN.
Nothing less than an LPN?
I wouldn't use anything.
Are there any requirements coming for that?
I think that might be required.
Okay.
But here's the thing, these, these, these folks, these nurses, they're, they are, they are on the front line for diagnosing things. And if they're, if, and so, we've had some very experienced ones and, and so I wouldn't want to lose, use anyone less than that.
Less than an LPN.
Because they're, I mean, they're providing nursing services and they're, these, one of the reasons that we have that is that we could not, I mean, for what we pay, we have, with the numbers of inmates that we have, we have people going to sick call every single day. And, and uh, you know, so maybe it's ten a day. Well, if we don't, if we don't have somebody that can, can help diagnose things and see what the, and realize what they're seeing is minor and that they can handle it, or, or not minor and they can't handle it. I mean, there's, there's no way we can do it without having somebody there. And nobody that's our size.
And I have no problem with.
Nobody that's our size doesn't.
Using LPNs.
I don't, I think that we do have to have LPNs.
Yeah. My question was, was there something that says that you, you cannot go below an LPN?
I don't, I, I think it would require to have LPNs.
I think, I, I, and I, I absolutely agree with you.
I'm not sure, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do it with anything less than LPN. Cause I, I, I know, I know kind of what the training level is for different nursing. And so, so what's below an LPN? Is it CNA?
Yeah, probably.
I think that's what it is. That's very little, that's very little medical training.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just merely asking the question.
So, so anyhow, what, what we're asking for is, I mean, we've, we've been through this uh, RFP and we just want to put it out. We just need your authority to put that out.
I think that putting it out there, these people that you have now might even lower their prices a little bit or getting back.
It might, because now they're, now, they know, they know. I mean, we've notified them.
Right.
That we're, or we will notify. Once you say that this is okay, but, but we've had discussions with them. They had their, one of their managers was here within the last couple of weeks. And, and we told him, we're doing, that we're going out for an RFP. And so.
I like this a lot. I don't think that we do it near enough with the contract services within the county that we should be doing.
Yeah. So, that's, that, that's all we need your approval for.
So, I got, I have a couple of questions. Um, so are these bid specs then pretty much the same or similar to what we've had in effect now?
Yes, very similar.
Okay.
Very similar.
And then.
It's very similar. I'd say the biggest, the biggest difference is that, that we, we spell it out, that we will accept LPNs.
Okay.
And then the supervision of that, there's a nurse manager, there's a physician involved, there's mental health services involved. It's pretty much exactly what we've got now.
Sure. Then I would only say, and we had Steve's item with request for um, proposals on gasoline, but um, I'd just like for us to remember that again, we do have Mr. Jason available to us. We haven't always had the um, uh, availability of um, the civil um, attorney um, available to us. And I would only say that when we can, running this kind of stuff past Jason um, is always gonna be helpful. And we haven't been used to that, but I would just suggest that um, when we are putting stuff out for bid, it would be a good idea to run it past Jason when we can.
Okay. I didn't know what I could run past Jason. I've run things past our county attorney on most of our stuff.
And I wanted to mention that our NERMA has a place we can send stuff to and to have a basic contract review or something like this. And it's included in our premium.
Right. So, if we can go there first, would probably be a wise idea. I'd love to hear, setting up here, I would love to hear um, someone say, and this has already been looked at by such and such.
I think that's a good idea. If you want to, if you want to just uh, table this for a couple of weeks and give Jason a chance to look it over?
Well, only if you have uh, time to do that. You feel comfortable with that?
Well, it'll, it'll delay us a couple of weeks, but that's all.
We have, uh, we don't have a meeting until, we have two Mondays in here without a meeting, right? Unless we have the one on the thirty-first that we talked about possibly having, but then we have um.
Our next meeting will be the seventh. Seventh of April.
Seventh of April, which is.
Don't, I'm sorry.
Two.
You're right.
So, it'd be three weeks out, is my point.
Yeah. One thing to ask, if, if, ask that you, if you meet, if you guys decide to meet on the thirty-first, put that on the agenda. That should give, if that gives Jason enough time to look it over.
Alright.
Well, my first thought would be just for the county's bill is that NERMA does offer that service. So, one option would be utilize the service that you're paying for in that regard, have them review it. Or if they're not able to, my office could at that point.
We recently had a situation where Steve asked for some legal guidance and we sent it to both places, got the same answer, basically.
Alright. So, yeah, I don't, I, I, I have no objection to that.
Right. I knew you wouldn't. I just was afraid of the timing.
No, and I think, I think we'll, we'll make the timing work.
Right. And I think we have a lot of staff people in here tonight and we need to be um, always aware that um, it would certainly make me feel better from my standpoint and I think the rest of them too, if we, if we know that um, it's been looked at ahead of time rather than after the fact.
Okay, your website.
We appreciate that.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. I have no objection to that.
Alright. We appreciate it. I, what you've said about all of this is good and I wondered who the company was and.
Well, obviously, we didn't just write that.
It's been here a long time.
That came from, that came from RFPs that were successful. And especially all the legal language in bigger places than that. So, so I am very confident that all of the legal terminology in there has been vetted by attorneys.
I particularly like this first part about the, the history of the jails.
My question, if they need to be there, but, but it's there.
Yeah.
Mark, does this, you, we're talking about the nursing staff and, and they're overseen by a, by a physician. Is that our choice or is that come with this?
No, no. That's their choice.
That they, they pick.
They, they, yeah, ACH.
The analog.
Whoever our medical provider is, they decide who to, we, we are experts at hiring and hiring medical professionals, they are. So, that's, we require them to have a physician overseen.
Okay.
Got you to think.
Well, if you're willing to wait, that's great with me and.
Yeah. Sounds good. So, we can get, we can send it. We'll just, I assume that you've got it already? We can, you can send it to NERMA?
I have. Maybe I got it in the packet.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet? Okay.
Sure.
Okay. So, you can just ask NERMA.
Sure.
To review it. Hopefully, and if they can do it in a couple of weeks.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it. So, the way I see it, we don't need to take any action on this item for tonight? Would that be alright, Jason? No action on this item?
Unless you want to formally table it to a time cert.
Um, I'd rather not do it for a time cert. Um, cause I'm not sure if we're gonna have a meeting on the thirty-first and if not, it'd be the next Monday. Okay? Okay, um, let me just tell you my plan here this evening. So, we have one more item at the bottom of page of, of the front page of the agenda. Um, and then after that, we go to the back page. Um, we moved up the item from Susan Wedeman. Um, and then the other item about moving the office from Mr. Knapper. My point is this, we're gonna take this item, um, discuss and consider the Pacer AI contract agreement. When we're finished with this item, we're gonna take a break. So, that's what I wanted to tell you. A long version of that.
Is that the halfway point?
I'm gonna say maybe. Alright, so we're up to discuss and consider the Pacer AI contract agreement. Charlie?
So, we had a um, partner in this who was gonna co-share with us. They didn't want to lock into three years. Uh, they wanted a uh, one-year contract for an opportunity to uh, back out after one year. Uh, so, we just decided to go with a one-year contract or discuss and consider a one-year contract with Pacer AI. And uh, that would change the funding uh, piece of it instead of twenty-five thousand dollars for the first year. If, because it's only a one-year contract, it would be thirty thousand dollars for the one year. Split with our partner, uh, that would be fifteen thousand dollars for the county. I still think it's a great value. They've got a ninety-six percent renewal rate. So, we could go that route or we could go with the um, keep it at three years with the understanding that there's, there's a possibility the partner went um, back out after the first year. They're only, they weren't concerned with the data. They weren't concerned with the, with the product. It was, it was just, one of the questions that was brought up at the meeting was, what if we get nine months into this deal and we find out that no one's been logging in, no one's been using the software? Certainly something we've experienced before, so uh, I, I understand their concern. So, I guess I'm kinda looking for some direction. Uh, I think it's still a great value. I would, I would be comfortable going with a three-year contract with, with the opportunity for that partner to back out. But I'm also okay with the one-year piece of it too, so keep your thoughts on it.
Charlie, I think it's important, give us a brief explanation of this for the people in the audience that haven't been here before. We'll try and let you keep it as brief as you can.
So, Pacer AI is a data company. They uh, track cellphone data. And they can do some really neat stuff with it. It's, it's completely anonymized, so you know, they don't know where you're sleeping. They don't know that uh, you know, Carrie went to the Ball Diamonds or that Ken went to the uh, Union Bar. They just know that there were so many people at this location.
For the gym.
Maybe I went to the gym. Haven't seen you there. The uh, um, so we did a study. We, when they presented to us, we had them draw a geofence around the twenty-three club. And they could tell us, uh, we said, tell us who came here and tell us what route they took to get here. We see this heat map from Gillette, Deadwood, Ola, the Front Range, and all these people coming here. And then they said, then we told them, uh, tell us where all those people went after the ball game. Fifteen percent of them went to Culvers, eighty percent of them went to the Hampton Inn. Five percent of them went to Walmart. Okay, and then of the people who didn't go to the Hampton Inn, who went home after the game? Okay, well, fifteen percent of the people actually had to stay the night in Bridgeport. Some of the people had to stay the night in Torrance and some of the people had to stay the night in Kimball. Oh, by the way, all those people who had to leave town for hotel rooms, they came back the next day for the rest of their, for the rest, for the next day at games. Uh, the super high-powered uh, data that we can, that we can glean from this. And the, the, the type of data we can get for it is really only limited uh, by our imaginations. So, one of the ideas I thought, uh, we could do is we could say, hey, let's study the soccer fields on a Saturday. Where are the folks going after their soccer day, their soccer games on a Saturday in the fall? And they say, okay, well, you know, so many of them are going to Ole, so many of them are going to Walmart, so many of them are going to um, Branza, that kind of stuff. And you know, that, that brings value to an organization like Western Nebraska Football Club to say, you know, because they have sponsorships in New Jersey. They say, okay, well, maybe this real estate is more, is now more valuable. You know, if, if, if this sponsor is paying four thousand dollars a year for that real estate, maybe that, maybe we can show people the data and we can get that out. Um, for tourism reasons, you know, we can study things like uh, the National Monument Museum. We can study things like the legacy of the plains. We can study things like the uh, bands on Broadway, that sort of stuff. And we can say, okay, how many people are coming from out of town? How many people are coming from in town? And that kind of stuff. Uh, OT days would be another good one to, to study. So, there's just a lot of good uh, data in front of it. What I'd like to do is, you know, make sure that we're using it. I've, I've reached out to the company that uh, provides this service and say, hey, could you put together like a job description for a summer intern? You know, I'd like to get a summer intern, maybe two, from the Rural Fellows Program again. Have them be data analysts. They could just really dive into this uh, software and see um, what, what are we leaving on the table? How can we maximize this? That's.
Appreciate it.
Charlie, I have a question. Is that a flat rate charge or is it every time we access that and ask for data, do they have a uh, fee for that?
No, so it'd be a one-year contract, unlimited access for one, thirty thousand dollars.
Well, you said unlimited. I just wanted to be sure that it was unlimited.
And they are, they are kinda making a few concessions for us. They're gonna give us, typically they give you one login for one entity. And they say, you know, you know, a person can use this with, with a partner. They're, they're willing to allow four logins for the county. One login for that partner. We need to be making datas, data-based decisions. This is a one step in that direction.
And so, we can go with a one-year contract. Instead of twenty-five thousand, it's thirty. Our portion is.
But it comes out of.
The tourism.
Tourism.
Well, I'm, I guess, just a thought is that I'm okay with the one-year contract if that's all that we have a guarantee of with the other entity. I just do the one year and then we can review it after that and they may have a different opinion after that one year as well.
Well, we're, we're gonna see how it works.
Right. Gives us a chance for fifteen thousand to.
Did we have an attorney review it?
Well, we can always uh, look at the agreement.
It does have a public safety component to it too. Can you get public safety agencies a lot of data to use in their planning?
The City of Gering chimed in on that and they want to study uh, dispersal routes from the Horizon Music Festival, the OT Days Concert, the Carnival of Land, uh, Food Fair and all those sorts of things. So, so they can be prepared if, in case there's a, an incident, there's a mass access, where, where do we need to be?
Can they be, can they be part of the cost or were they not willing?
They're very interested. They've received a presentation on this uh, and, and um, Pat Heath is very interested. I, I could go there to ask for the partnership. We're, we're getting, we're getting close to the, you know, tourist season, so we want to be able to have this in place. Kick this down the road for two more months, so.
Say, if we're successful, it'd be a big, big part of that, cause they're gonna be reviewing that too, cause they use that stuff.
We've got a, if logins ready to log into that.
You know, I think uh, there may be several other people and potential partners in this, once they know what's available. But in an effort to move it along and make it happen, um, seems to me if we make the decision, we've kinda already talked about it a little bit, but if we make the decision and get um, get the information available, then maybe if we're going um, to go for additional years, maybe we can get some additional partners. And it might be. And it might be a little less expensive if we have additional partners who wanna to go along with it. But certainly I think tourism and TCD is a good partnership for this, and makes sense for their members and our, all of our people in the county to be able to possibly participate in at least getting some information over the next year.
I have one other question. Charlie, what are the boundaries? How, how big of an area are you gonna focus on? Or I mean, is it just county only, or will it go up into Sioux County to some of the other museums and different places?
So because we have access to it, we can, we can study events any. So if we wanna study a soccer tournament in Casper, or a soccer tournament in Kearney, we can go do this. If you wanna study a cheerleading competition on the Front Range, we can do that.
I've no idea. That's interesting. I had no idea you could go up there for.
So one of the things that happened in the, in the presentation of this thing is, there was a town like Scotts Bluff, and a town like Cheyenne. And they knew that all these people were traveling to Cheyenne. And the town that's like Scotts Bluff said, hey, we wanna build an Arby's because when I go to Cheyenne, I eat at Arby's, and I want an Arby's in my town. So they said, well, bring us the data, prove to us that if, if we build an Arby's, they're gonna eat at Arby's. Well, so they studied it. Well, they found out that most people eat at Chick-fil-A. And so they decided, we're gonna recruit a Chick-fil-A to come in. And then so, I mean, it's really, like I said, the, the, the opportunities are just limited by our imagination. The data's, the data's there, and we're just gonna figure out what sort of data we wanna do search for. So I'll make a motion to do the Pacer AI contract at one year for thirty thousand dollars to cost share with our partner at half the cost.
I will second that.
Alright. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Yeah, five yeses.
Alright, the motion's carried. Okay, so the next item is gonna be Susan Wedeman, but we're gonna take our break first, and we'll do that now. We'll try and make it. Just upon our modification of the agenda, we're going down to the item that says, "Discussion Regarding the Relocation of Tourism Director." That's Director's Office, I think we're talking about. And Susan Wedeman, the Board Treasurer of Legacy of the Plains. Isn't that right, Carl? Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for allowing me the time to come and visit with you about this. The county currently pays Legacy of the Plains six thousand dollars, five hundred dollars a month that the county pays the museum. The county does pay for internet there. Upon hearing about the possibility of moving the office, I just want to kinda bring to your attention, or just some things for you to think about. We feel that the move would be very detriment, detrimental, there we go, to serving the tourists of the area. One, Legacy of the Plains Museum is staffed seven days a week. If you move it to the county courthouse, it's only open five days a week. Granted, the tourism office itself is not open seven days a week, but the information is out in the outer hall of the museum as you come in, and we have volunteers there seven days a week.
How old do you lose two days a week if you move it?
If you move it to the county courthouse, county courthouse is closed on Saturday and Sunday.
Right, but so it's, she doesn't come in Saturday or Sunday?
I know, but the museum is open.
And they can go to the museum?
And they, when they go to the museum, to the tourist office, if it's not, if it's not open, they can go in and get all the tourism information that we have in the outer area.
Stuff out in the county, so that's, that won't change, right?
Correct. Okay, but we also have volunteers there that know the area.
That won't change.
That won't change, but that's what also helps with the tourism office being there. She makes sure those things are, are stocked and ready for tourists to come. We help each other.
Now, should she do that during the week, make sure stocked up for the weekend?
Let's, let's let her go through, she, I'm sure she has a speech. There's some notes she wants to get through, so let's get, let's let her get through.
Okay. Alright. As with, museum's open seven days a week. There are people there seven days a week to help tourists. Number two, the current office is on the way to Scotts Bluff National Monument. So that is on the way to our county's biggest tourism asset. So that's where most of the tourism people go to when they come to this areas, to the monument. Legacy of the Plain is on the way to the Scotts Bluff National Monument. Three, I think the relationship in the last ten-plus years that the office has been housed there, I think has been beneficial to both parties. I know the director and the tourism director bounce ideas off each other, talk to each other, try to come up with ideas. I think it's a mutual benefit, mutually beneficial to both organizations. I, it is one of our revenue streams. Granted, six thousand dollars is not gonna make or break us, but it is one of our revenue streams. I think the tourism director's comfortable there. I hesitate to say this, but I feel almost like it's a little retaliatory. We write a letter to the commissioners on January fifteenth. Commissioner Knapper wanted a, a meeting with our executive committee. We couldn't have it because I was out of town and another director was out of town. Mr. Knapper asked us if we would resend the letter that we sent to you. We said no. The following week, you have a group out there looking at the office. And I don't wanna say, or, or, we almost feel like that it's retaliatory measure because a week later, you're out there saying, well, we're looking at moving this. So that's kinda the way we feel. Whether that's right, wrong, or whatever, that's almost the way we feel. And as I said, six thousand dollars isn't gonna make or break us, but we feel it's detrimental. We feel it's the wrong decision to move the tourism office out of that facility.
Susan, that, maybe Brenda's here, that six thousand comes out of the tourism money.
Correct.
Not out of the county.
I believe so. Right. It's five hundred a month, and then she pays for an internet. So it includes all the utilities for the five hundred dollars a month. It's pretty reasonable office space.
But we have office space that doesn't cost anything.
Let's, let's, let's see if there's other folks from the public that wanna add to this discussion, and then we can have our discussion and questions on the next agenda item. That's, that's how I'd like to proceed. I appreciate you having asked questions.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks, Susan. Anyone else would like to speak?
I'm Elia Nor, Keshi Mek. I'm president of the board. The office that Brenda now occupies will probably be put to use for the museum. It will not be a tourism office. I wanna make that clear. That office, that area will become museum activity because we need office space, or can use more office space.
There you are.
So, but for you to think that that information is going to be there like it is now, it will not. Without Brenda there, that information will not be there. Thank you.
And I should be sure that we reiterate something. When we were out, and I say we, the Building Utilization Committee, which I'm on, was out there, Brenda did make, I think, clear to us, or certainly was of the belief that her, she has some brochures on the outside of the building, but then there were some racks inside what I call the foyer area, and that those, those racks would no longer be available to us at that location. It's her racks, is what I understand.
That's right. I, I, it just kinda depends on how much is gonna be there. But if she's not there to make sure that they're filled, or that they don't get filled, or whatever, then we also might look, since we're not getting any rent for that space, we may look at putting more of our own marketing material and brochures out there. Okay?
Okay, thanks. Anyone else that's here to speak about this specific item? Alright, if not, I think that we could go to, Charlie, I'm assuming that, that you're probably gonna wanna speak to this item next?
Yeah, I've just got some pictures. I think there's a little bit of confusion of what is the tourism office? What is the Scotts Bluff County Museum? I wanna share these items. So, I think you guys remember on the last agenda item I talked about, we need to make data-based decisions. So, you know, looking here, we have, I've done, done some digging and got some information from Brenda. And I just wanted to go over a few things, so. Yeah, we pay six thousand dollars a year to rent the space. And that space is an office. That's, that, that office is not in these pictures, okay? That office is a, Susan shared the dimensions of it. It's a fairly good-sized room. It's got plenty of storage. It's kinda tucked back away from everything else that's going on at the Legacy. If you walk up that sidewalk to go in the front door, it's there on the right. It's got a sign above it. Go to the door, there's some pamphlets on the outside of the door, go inside. That, that office is not designed to receive tourists. It is a office space for the tourism director. Tourism director is not a person who receives tourism. There was, there was a two-week period where she was not in the office. Oh, sorry, there's a four-week period in this winter where she was not in the office, attending the various conferences, doing Restaurant Week, that sounds, that kinda stuff. That is the benefit of having the Legacy of the Plains staff there. So, the visitor center, this is the Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center. It is an airlock with brochures. And from what I understand is that we won't be allowed to occupy the visitor center. We won't be allowed to occupy the airlock with brochures if the tourism director's office moves. That's, that's what I understand. So, possibly. I'm really happy to hear that. Because there is value in this Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center. So, when visitors search the web, well, I just want everybody to hear this. When every, when visitors search the web, when they call, when they reference print media for the location of the Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center, they are directed to the Legacy of the Plains Museum. That is a tremendous value. When someone searches Google Maps for the location of the Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center, Google takes them to the Legacy of the Plains Museum. Surely another entity would find this very valuable. Maybe a coffee shop, maybe a restaurant, maybe a hotel, maybe an ice cream shop. Maybe we should bid the location of the visitor center out. And maybe it's worth somewhat, maybe it's worth something for the visitor center to be next to another business. The visitor center drives traffic to the Legacy of the Plains, no doubt. Marketing people would understand this. Brenda prints over forty thousand dollars of material advertising the Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center as the Legacy of the Plains. She told us that. She told us that she would have to reprint all that material if we moved out of that office. We probably wouldn't reprint it, you know, we'll, we'll give the Legacy of the Plains that, that extra traffic. That's wonderful for them. Scotts Bluff County spends thousands and thousands of dollars to distribute that media. Those brochures and those magazines. We pay people to place those all around the region, all up and down I-80, all up and down I-25, all at a whole bunch of other tourism locations. The county website, the county tourism website, Nebraska Tourism Website, all list Legacy of the Plains as the location of the Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center. That is certainly valuable. That is certainly valuable. For the Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center to not be located there, for this, for the Legacy of the Plains to threaten to remove us from that location, it wouldn't hurt Scotts Bluff County. It certainly would not. It would hurt the Legacy of the Plains. There's no doubt about that. So I went to the visitor center this weekend, and I took some pictures. And these are the pictures. This is exactly how we found it. This third page, that blue circle, that is the airlock I'm talking about. That is the location of the Scotts Bluff County Visitor Center. So that's, that's why we're, so the other piece of this is, you know, we, we think there's value in this. We should be receiving income to place our visitor center somewhere. So that's, that's where we're at with that piece. I think, I think the value is there. You know, moving the tourism office under the county roof is certainly, certainly our prerogative. You know, there's a lot more I could go into, but I think that's, that is enough. Hope you guys have questions, like, maybe, maybe I get to go over some of this other, other data that I.
What's, what's wrong with directing to the, to the Legacy? And I mean, I know you've touched on it, and I would disagree with, with Susan. I think the Legacy, there's probably more people that go there than the monument. I, I don't know that for sure. I, I, I really don't know.
Legacy has about twenty thousand visitors, and that includes events and special events. They had the farmer's market this weekend, and so they count those in their visitor numbers. But Brenda shared with us eighteen to twenty thousand visitors to the Legacy, and about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to the monument.
Okay, I was wrong. Never mind.
Data, we're doing data here tonight.
Yeah, that's okay. If you want my opinion on it, I think, you know, that a visitor center needs to be someplace where visitors go. The Legacy is, is a nonprofit. Well, you like to make a little money, but you're listed as a nonprofit. And, and it's, it's one of our jewels. It's one of our attractions. It's one of the reasons that people come here, is to go visit the Legacy of the Plains. By moving that office out of there and putting it somewhere down the hall here, I don't know how many people would drive to Gearing, come up the steps, and then go into the Visitor Bureau to ask questions as to where's the best place to eat, or whatever the case might be. The advantage that we have is that we have volunteers out there that are familiar with the area, can direct people to other. direct people to other attractions, or whatever else has to happen. I think that's a plus, I think that's a big plus for the five hundred dollars a month that we're paying to be there. And, and I don't know any of the locations. Charlie, you brought up bidding it out to, to go into a, a store, or, or a shop, or someplace else. Those are all profit, for-profit places. Now, you bid it out, but is, is the county now enhancing somebody else's business? I mean, for that. I, I, I don't know whether, whether we wanna get into that, to be honest with you. Uh, but again, I, I, you know, the, the main thing is, is that when you go other places, the Visitors Bureau or questions about the area are usually someplace where visitors go. And I don't, again, don't know how many people are going to come over here, take the steps and go over to a, a vacant office, even though we already have it, but we need to look at what, what the usage of that office is for, and the benefit that we, that we get from having it where it is right now.
So, I think, uh, you know, there's, talking about two different things, I think. Moving Brenda's office here, moving the tourism director's office here is, uh, separate from, I would, I would like it to be separate from moving, moving the visitor's center. Um, visitor's center is something different, and the tourism director's office is something different, and the value is in the visitor's center. The Legacy of the Plains should really, really want the visitor's center to stay there. We are driving traffic there. We are driving traffic there. I certainly do not want the visitor's center here. I do want the tourism director's office.
And what is, what is the main reason that you wanna move from that location to here?
We need to save the money, we need to save the rent. Um, six thousand dollars could go to pay for approximately two tournaments worth of umpires or referees to run a basketball tournament, or run a softball tournament, uh, or a volleyball tournament. You know, the sports tourism playbook, uh, suggests that our area could support ten to twelve or tournaments. We need to help create those tournaments, and those, those tournaments will bring, will fill hotel rooms. Uh, every tournament we bring in is gonna be worth about forty-seven thousand dollars in lodging tax revenue, according to the sports, uh, sports index. So-
Is that in a year, or is that-
So, yeah, yeah, so we, yeah, so we have a, yeah, it's interesting, isn't it?
It's not per event.
So, according to the sports index, which is a calculator that we, we have access to through Huddleup, um, a tournament on the same scale as the Twenty-three Club creates forty-seven thousand dollars worth of lodging tax revenue. This is a report that was generated by Brenda.
Well, I think it's quite correct.
Well, we, there's a-
It might have dollars, but when you only take the three percent of those dollars, that's not gonna be subtracted. Three or four percent, whatever your lodging taxes.
So, we can, we can delve into a sports tourism conversation, or we can stay on the topic. But, the reason, the reason being is that the, the, uh- Twenty-three club baseball tournament, expected total room nights, fourteen hundred room nights. Room rate, a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per night. I think that's quite low. Airbnbs also fill up, camping sites also fill up. Uh, those Airbnbs and those premier hotels in the area, um, certainly get a premium when supply is at, um, where there's a demand for supply. Just last Friday, the col- uh, fi- uh, a Friday in March with nothing going on, last Friday, the, the Hampton in-rate was one seventy-nine. Midsummer with, uh, baseball tournaments in town, those rooms are gonna be well above two hundred. So, um, it's substantial, and according to this report that Brenda ran, uh, she ran two different reports. One shows forty-seven thou- forty thousand, the other shows forty-seven thousand dollars worth of lodging tax generated, so.
How many rooms will we rent if we're in this situation?
This is claiming fourteen hundred, and that's assuming we have, uh, that's assuming we have the hotel, hotel inventory. Now, Huddleup has told us we only have about six hundred, uh, rooms per night. Uh, there are family, uh, suitable for families coming from those sorts of events, so, you know, five hundred times two nights, that's a thousand room nights. But then you've also got all the Airbnbs in town that also fill up, you know, camping sites.
Well, even if our lodging tax didn't hit forty thousand, if it was twenty thousand, there's still a lot of other spin-off that comes with all that.
Oh, yeah. Sales tax generated, almost twelve thousand dollars. Total estimated spending, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I think that's low. Uh, tremendous value in sporting events, tremendous value in sporting events.
So, I have a question, um, Susan, for you. The, the lease apparently is six thousand dollars a year, five hundred per month, apparently. Um, is that, is that then, um, written as a month-to-month lease, or?
I don't know. I have not seen the lease. So, I don't know if it's just every month, between, that would probably, sorry, that was probably in place ten, twelve years ago. Whenever, whenever that office got moved back there. So, I don't know if there was an official contract made. I don't know. I have not personally seen a lease.
Okay. And Brenda, are you able to produce a lease? Okay?
There was a lease.
Yeah, a long time. We can find it.
I can look in my records.
What's that?
I can look in my records.
Cause Ken, that's probably what, twelve years ago?
Well, it's when Brenda started, first-
Yeah, cause it was right before Brenda started.
She was, she had a little office downstairs, whatever.
Cause I know, when all of that happened, um, that was the decision then, is to move it out there.
Was it, was it Legacy by then, or was it?
Well, Lega- it's been Legacy ten years, so-
Maybe Farm and Ranch?
So, it might be Farm and Ranch.
So, I, um, talked to a commissioner who was on the board at the time that decision was made, and I was informed that, at the time, the Legacy of the Plains was not taxed exempt on one of the parcels of farmland. And the Legacy protested the valuation, wanted it to be exempt, and the legislature declined, and, and the board had to say, we're not taxing that parcel, and for, um, you know, and then, this is what a commissioner told me. Uh, the, the, the trade-off was, okay, instead of paying your two thousand, go ahead and pay your two thousand dollar tax bill, and we'll rent the space from you for six thousand dollars. That is what a commissioner was on the board at the time.
That was me, Charlie. Yeah, I'm, I'm in the room.
I, it's, it's a, it's an interesting-
I wasn't on the board at the time, but now I have no idea.
It's an interesting arrangement, for sure. Um, and at the time, it was probably the right move. We have, we, the county has given, has, has, has get, provided the Legacy of the Plains with over five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the last thirteen years. We are very proud of the Legacy of the Plains, and we have built up a tremendous asset, and it's time to build new assets, like additional tournaments. If we could, if we could bring another Twenty-three Club baseball tournament to town, a volleyball tournament, a soccer tournament, a cheerleading competition, a wrestling tournament, we can, we, we, the calendar's open for twelve more of those. We could, we could, you know, we could blow up the hotel situation here.
Okay, the la- the largest amount that the county gave is in two thousand thirteen. That's when, uh, it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one ninety-four. Um, I think that was partly of the capital campaign when we were building the annex, and we were putting all that new part on, um, to the museum, building out the exhibit hall, building that area where her office is. That was in two thousand thirteen. Um, two thousand fourteen, we received nineteen thousand, eight oh five. Twenty twenty, we received fifty-four thousand, and we are very appreciative of that. Please note, we are appreciative of the money that we receive. That, this is for, for capital improvements. Um, twenty twenty, we, fifty-four thousand, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one hundred, fifty thousand in the last three years as part of our next capital campaign. So, that's what we received. We've also received marketing money, which we also appreciate, because, as you all know, advertising is expensive, it's not cheap. So, we appreciate the marketing money, the materials that use the address. Yes, we're very appreciative of that. And as I said before, it's more like we're a partner together, rather than, and we have a good relationship with the County Tourism Commission, and so, moving the director out of there, I think will hurt that relationship.
It certainly is not gonna hurt it, and I, I've, I've got the numbers here also. If you combine promotions with capital improvements and rent, we're at five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in total financial assistance, and that's not including all the free advertising I was talking about earlier, with the website and everything, every, all the, all the traffic that's funneled there through the, uh, visitor's center being there. So, I mean, that's a, that's worth a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. So, so, um, here's, uh, there's a lot going on, too, but I, I think I've made enough points.
Okay, so, the next item is gonna be simply a continuation of this same discussion, I think. So, I guess the question is, under this item, um, Susan, not to say you won't be able to speak later if you need to, but under this item, do you think that, um, you have presented the majority of your information? Okay? Alright. So, this was a separate item on the agenda, um, and this was intended to be discussion and information coming from, uh, the Legacy of the Plains Museum, and we appreciate that. Um, based upon Susan saying that she's given us the information that she has, at least so far, um, I'm wondering, is there any reason why we couldn't or shouldn't back up to the previous item, which is related or the same? Alright, so then, let's back up to the item previously on the agenda, which is discuss and consider moving the office of the tourism director. And so, this one is, um, um, some of the continued information, and I would ask from the audience, is there anyone here, um, that, um, hasn't spoken already, or even if you have, if you have something specifically about this item, if you would, um, come forward and, and speak? I think that would be good, to do it now, and then we can go to the commissioners' thoughts. Alright, seeing none for now, um, then, we'll go to the commissioner items, I guess. Mr. Knapper, again, this is, um, the item that you brought on the agenda. Is there anything else that you wanna say specifically about this item?
Not at this time.
Okay. Other thoughts or questions from commissioners?
You said you had a committee that would, looked at all of this. Were you on that committee, Mark?
Um, it, it's our regular building utilization committee, and so, anytime there's a, a thought or a request about utilizing a space that might be empty, or just switching an office from one place to another, the building utilization committee normally gets called, and, um, there's people on there like Jay Steinle, the, um, John Ernie, and, uh, with the thought of, uh, the, uh, IT information, and, and Jay with electric and other things. Heather Haushild is on that committee as well. She wasn't able to be at that meeting, she had a prior commitment. Um, Lisa's part of that, I'm part of that.
And you had a report in your packets of, or this is-
Right, yeah, you, there was a, a sheet made by Lisa concerning that with some typed-up information, um-
Do you want me to read it?
Right there, it's right there.
Do you want me to read it? Sorry, is that, okay. It's in your packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we read it.
Here.
Oh.
Yeah. You can blow it up just a bit more, that would be helpful.
And I think, I think the commissioners have read it, but for the sake of the audience, maybe you should read it.
Topic of discussion, space availability for tourism office at County Administration Building. I was asked by Charlie Knapper to gather the BUC to discuss moving the tour office from the Legacy of the Plains Museum, to open offices available in the Administration Building. We met at the Legacy of the Plains Museum space dedicated to tourism, to view the office resources and space currently provided. Brenda's current office space is a twelve-by-fourteen. Now, I am no judge of size, I threw some numbers, but it's a good-sized room, okay? Approximate space, and she pays six thousand dollars annually for rent, along with two hundred and seventy dollars a month for aloe phone and internet. She has a large open space with cupboards available for supply storage. Office equipment included a large desk that was not in good condition, computer and copier slash printer. Also located, located in the office was a former computer and former printer scanner that were not in use and would not have to be transferred. We discussed the space at the breezeway entrance to the Legacy of the Plains. Brenda is allowed to display her Visitor Bureau brochures and pamphlets obtained for the annual Nebraska Travel Association brochure swap. This is, is an event sponsored for native members to gather statewide brochures and pamphlets to advertise events throughout the state to the traveling pu- public. It is my understanding the brochures are a product, are a product of her membership and are to display, be displayed with the Visitors Bureau office, which would be where her office is. Others interpreted the Legacy would not allow the display at the tourism offices, was moved from their location, and I think you've discussed that at length tonight. The BUC moved on to the Administration Building. We met in the former health office. Two offices will be available in the Administration Building, the former health office and the office soon to be vacated by the mapping department. Based on the BUC review, either office can accommodate the business needs of a tourv- tourism office slash Visitors Bureau. IT had no issues moving and setting up the computer and copy printer equipment. Building and grounds can update the space with new paint if deemed necessary.
Good, thanks. And I think what's important, that the building utilization committee, um, was simply looking at physical space. We did not have an opinion as to whether it was a good thing to do or not. Um, we simply was looking at physical space, and would it work with the things that she has now, would it work over here? And she would have more space here than there.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason why physically that it wouldn't work. So, I would just say that from our committee. Um, but we weren't looking at any other of the financial aspects of it, we were just looking at the physical part of it, at that time.
That's what, that's what you need.
Right. Any other comments from commissioners?
Is the, uh, is it that useful?
She pays for her own, and then he paid for her.
You have your own job?
It's only tourism.
It's only tourism.
Is the Legacy, have you discussed a reduction in that rent, Susan, at all? Have, have you discussed a reduction in that rent that we're paying you now? Okay, is that a possibility, do you think?
I don't know. We don't have a regular board meeting until April.
Okay. No, I, it just, it just came in. I had to get it out before I lost it. So that happens. I would certainly be willing to entertain, uh, leaving the visitor center there for free. Uh, I still think that there's more value there for Legacy than there is for us. If we're thinking about serving tourists, then that's the thing. I did notice, you know, when I went through the visitor center, there's thirty-four pieces of material advertising for places outside of the county and only fifteen pieces of material advertising places within the county. Now, I know we have agree- agreements with other places to advertise for them, but it would make, if, if we wanna support Scottsburg County, we should at least have, our information should at least pace the other information. Advertise for little businesses, little hotels, little coffee shops, that kind of stuff.
Are, are you talking that Breezeway?
Yeah.
Now, that's what I, and Brenda, can correct me if I'm wrong, that, that's why I thought she went to that brochure swap.
To get the, yes, yes, sir.
Bring the stuff in to advertise for other locations as they should be doing for us as well.
Right.
Am I, am I right?
So.
But that's what the items, that's what's in the Breezeway is not just Scottsburg County, it's, okay, just.
Can you come up?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, so it's no new materials at all. That just means we're handing out more of the local stuff than we are the stuff from other places.
I was just talking about the intent of what the visitor center isn't just to broadcast Scottsburg County. It's the whole statewide, and they're doing that for us too.
Absolutely, that's why we have brochure swap. So if I just go and swap with local entities, then nobody's gonna swap with me. The whole point is that you take things from everywhere.
Well, hold on, hold on. There's no reason why you can't swap with local entities. If you're, you're still gonna go to the brochure swap, and you're still gonna bring everything that you get, everything that's there should stay there. But we should be promoting our area more. Thirty-four pieces of material for outside the county to fifteen pieces of material for item, for entities inside the county. We need to be keeping, at least keep pace. If we're advertising for stuff outside, we don't pay much money.
Well, uh, I just have a quick question. Since this one came up, I'm starting to learn.
Talking to.
Oh, I'm just learning a little bit about tourism, which doesn't amount to a lot. Have a small question. I was at Cabell on Saturday, don't tell my wife. But, uh, there is no brochures for anything for Scottsburg County in their brochure rackets. That's it.
Right, because we, we don't pay for those. That, that's all a paid service.
Is it?
Yes. So we, so you, you basically get your map out and pick if you want, you know, north or south, east, west, whichever direction that you want. Um, and we, we don't, we don't pay for Sydney because it's already west.
They charge us to put brochures in that rack.
They charge you, yes.
So what do they charge us? I mean, what, you have a rough deal with that?
Um, yeah, right now, we have two different contracts. One is with the companies that are north and south, and that's about four thousand dollars, and the one that's east and west is six thousand dollars. But I don't put stuff in there because they have a visitor center, and I know that if they stop at the visitor's center, well, in Kimball, she was excellent, but Sydney and anywhere else, they're gonna direct them here. I pay for the places where, um, there, I mean, you know, that don't know about us at all.
So they don't let you pick where you wanna put them, and they, they, you have an, an area, and it might be a big area.
You pick the areas.
You might be putting them in places that aren't doing any good at all.
Exactly. And you know, I mean, they give you a report at the end of the year, so I know, they know exactly how many I sent them, and they know exactly how many we have back. So we've gathered that information over the years and find the places that work the best, and that's what our contract states.
Well, I didn't know, I just thought, you know, Sydney, Cabell is really a good place to law a lot of traffic through there, and it just seemed like.
Yeah, it, we, it, the stuff didn't, it didn't do good there, and I think it's probably because.
You've tried it there before?
Yeah, it's probably because the Sydney Visitor Center is right across the way, and a lot of people stop there.
Can you put it in there?
It is in there. It is in there. And if that's more of a private one-on-one conversation, so she's able to find out where they're going and what they're doing.
Yeah, I didn't know. I, you know, what I know is pretty, pretty minute, what I know about it.
I know, all of the thi- everything that you see in hotels, truck stops, all of that, that's all paid.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Believe it or not, you can't just stick anything in there.
Huh?
It's a contract.
Okay, well, you answered my question. I wanted, I just didn't know why it wouldn't be that close to us. Didn't very far from there to here.
It, it didn't perform well there, so we pulled it.
Gotcha.
Charlie, you brought up the, uh, the amount of money that the Legacy of the Plains has received. That has to be approved by the whole committee, correct? Well, the committee certainly didn't, uh, sign the lease. The commissioners signed the lease. No, I'm, I'm, no, I'm talking about other funds and stuff that she was talking about. The, the tourism committee certainly has to approve the funds, and we have a board, this board, the five of us, have approv- approved a hundred and fifty-dollar grant, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant request just a couple of years ago. So we have certainly supported them, and we'll continue to support them through the, the tourism grant process. We're just done paying rent there to, for brochures in the Breezeway. That's, that's, that's distorted. Six thousand dollars can go so much further in other, in another payment. Six thousand dollars will cover umpires for three tournaments. Three tournaments is three weekends of full hotels. Susan, let me ask you this. If we decide not to pay the six thousand a year, could Brenda still stay there? All right, ju- just a hypothetical question. I don't know. Cause if, if, if the six thousand is the issue, then that, maybe that's what we need to be concentrating on.
Uh, Ken, why would we not want our employees in our building? Do we have other employees that are not in our properties?
I, I, I think we need to compare apples and oranges.
That's what I'm trying to do. I'm saying, do we have other employees that are not in our properties that we own?
No, but, but that's the only tourism one that we have.
It's the only tour I realize of, but I just.
And, and we're depending on people that are here visiting, to visit. Local people aren't gonna go to the, maybe they will. I don't see that many local people going to the tourism office to find out where to go to do something.
Do you suppose that many people go to the tourism office? Go to the museum? I don't suppose they, they know it's even there.
Brenda? How many brochures go through the, the Legacy? Do you think?
Well, it isn't gonna change that.
Well, if we weren't, we need to, we need to keep the visitor center and tourism.
Tour, I'm talking about tourism. That's, that's two different things, I agree.
But what she had said, that if, if Brenda moves out, the visit, the, the visitor center goes away too. Did I hear that correctly?
Possibly.
Okay. To the detriment of the Legacy of the Plains. If the visitor center, if the visitor center leaves, Google Maps doesn't know, Google Maps no longer sends people their, the printed material that we spent forty thousand dollars to print and additional ten thousand dollars to distribute. Those things don't get out there. The county website, the county tourism website, the Nebraska tourism website, all stop advertising the Legacy of the Plains as a location of the visitor's center. It behooves the visitor, it behooves the Legacy to allow the visitor's center to stay even if we stop paying rent and go to the tourism director's office. An answer to your question, Russ, I think the tourism director's position is something that is something more than the assessor's office or the treasurer's office or another county activity or another county, uh.
But it shouldn't revolve just around one agency, I don't think. I mean, we, we, we got, like Charlie said, we got baseball, we have museums, we've got parks, there's a lot of other things that are involved. We have balloon races and all these different things. And that, a lot of that doesn't tie into, uh, farm ranch museum type things. It's just an office there, and if all, the only crutch we've got hold in that office is a rack of brochures, I don't think that's a very good excuse to have our employees.
Well, you have people there that are answering questions and directing.
How will that change?
If, if our, if our information is no longer going to be there, and it's not listed, then if you have any questions, go to the Legacy of the Plains. Where are they gonna go? They gonna drive downtown to come up on the second floor?
We used to have tourism booths. They had some caboose's that were tourism booths at one time, and that's what they used to use until they took over.
If you come forward.
I will. Hello, Melissa Price. Um, I, I guess the question that I'm wondering is maybe if we're focusing on the right part of the conversation. There's a lot of talk about, um, some brochures at a vestibule, correct? And I guess I was thinking to myself, when the last time it was that I went somewhere, and I, I, um, I travel a lot. I travel a lot for my business, but I also, um, when I'm not with my business, I travel just a lot for leisure with my husband. And I try to remember the last time that I've gotten a brochure anywhere. Um, a, I really think that a digital strategy is really kind of the modern, what tourism modernly is today, and I think about like my phone, and like this is my brochure, right? And, um, your website, your social media channels, those things, you have an app, whatever. Um, that's kind of your salesperson that works for you twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And so I kind of wonder if, you know, how often people look, and I'm kind of an old lady. Um, I have adult children who I can guarantee you probably don't pick up brochures anywhere at all, and I have a son who has a goal to visit every single national park. And so I, you know, I can't help but wonder, to me, I feel like, um, we, you know, we, if we're thinking about a modern strategy and a digital strategy, I just kind of wonder if this is, you know, a conversation that it may be de minimis, so that's, those were just my thoughts.
I'm like you, when I go places, uh, I get on my phone and look, look up the area and see what there is to do in the area. I, I rarely look at a background.
I, I tried to think of the last time I went to a visitor's center, and I went when I was at Cold Deadwood Nights, and it was because the bathrooms are clean. So, just, just a little additional.
So I, I'm sorry I gotta say this, but for the fourth time in the last seven days, I've gone to the Legacy of the Plains website, and it is down. It's been down a lot.
It has been because we added a, trying to pay bonus, and it keeps going down.
So.
We are trying to get that at least.
So we're, I mean, we're, we're kind of the backup here. We're, we're.
You know, I kinda like the lady said, I take, when I go somewhere, I ask Mr. Google, really, what are the attractions in my area?
So, um, I, I, I would like to make a motion to move the tourism director's office to the county admin building. It will be up to the Legacy of the Plains to decide if they want the visitor's center to remain there. Uh, and if they choose, if they decide that the value is not there for them, we will go out for RFP. Maybe a coffee shop, maybe an ice cream shop, maybe a hotel, boutique hotel would find value in, um, maybe the civic, would find value in paying for the benefit of being this Scottsburg County Visitor's Center, because we drive people to your location. So that's my, that's my motion. Move the tourism director's office to the county admin building.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I just, I just think it's a poor move. I mean, we're, we're, we're doing something that has worked well, it's been a good partnership. Uh, yeah, we've got the six thousand dollars to talk about, I guess. Uh, and I don't know whether there'd be any, any discussion or negotiation with that, if that seems to be, that seems to be the, excuse me? Sure, no, I, I, I understand that. I understand that.
But I'm gonna further qualify why I seconded that motion. Uh, I'm looking at our citizens. When we have two empty offices in the admin building, why in the world are we paying rent to have to make another building? It just doesn't make sense.
Again, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You didn't register, Ken.
Yours didn't register.
Get four yeses, one no, and a yes mayor.
All right, so the motion's carried. Okay, so we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is discuss and consider our resolution directing the public transit manager to apply for funding under section fifty-three eleven of the Federal Transit Act and the Nebraska Public Transportation Assistance Program for fiscal year, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six and fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Kurt?
Okay. As per my previous discussions with you, I have to do the two-year operating agreement with the state to line up with their biennial budget, and then they take that information, they go to the FTA with their information. The FTA allocates funds to the, to NDOT for all rural transit agencies for the next two-year period. Um, we build, basically, I take two county budgets, I build it out. We try to build in a inflation factor and a kind of a, what's the crystal ball look like two years down the road, and we build in extra, especially for this two-year operating agreement. Normally, it's not a big issue as long as it's not a ridiculously high number. Um, the state gets the funds, and then should something happen where our expenses exceed what my county budget is, I don't have to go back to the state for a supplemental agreement. They already have additional funds available. Because normally, this number is significantly higher than my two-year county budget. It accounts for, um, all non-operating and operating costs. They also get funds set aside for the match for vehicles. All this goes into it, and these are the funds that we get reimbursed, um, over the next two years. Um, I did put out a, the public notice is, is an estimate, so I put that public notice out, um, I have to have an affidavit that got published, and this all has to be in by, it's supposed to be in by Friday, but I don't think the state's gonna make it. They're, they don't have all their work done. But we're looking, um, my last two-year operating agreement was four point seven million in federal funds, which we should be fine with that. I'm coming in way under that for the public notice. Um, honestly, they're still, we're still tweaking some numbers. By the end of the week, I hope to have at least a little more accurate budget, and then we'll add in a little bit more of an inflation factor again. We're asking for the funds through the FTA. It has to go into a portal with the state. They compile it all, they send it up to, uh, the FTA, and the FTA comes back and says, yes, we have the funds, or no, and then we go from there. So it's essentially just a resolution authorizing the application through section fifty-three eleven of the Federal Transit Act and the Nebraska Public Transportation Act funds. Whereas the federal, a federal funding allocation is available under section fifty-three eleven of the Federal Transit Act and the Nebraska Public Transportation Act funds, and whereas Scottsburg County Public Transit desires to apply for said funds to be used to provide public transportation with demand response service throughout Scottsburg County and deviated fixed route in Scottsburg, Gearing and Tarrytown. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the Scottsburg County Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the Director of Scottsburg County Public Transit Program to apply for the above-mentioned funds. Said funds are to be used for the operating assistance and capital expenses for these services during the fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven. And again, this is, this is nothing locked in for the county budget. This is just going after the federal money to ensure that when we approve my budget and I submit it for reimbursement, they have the state and federal funds are there to reimburse the county. So it's it's kind of a pie in the sky, really, I call it, it's my crystal ball with a cataract. Kind of a number.
A crystal ball with what?
With a cataract.
With a cataract. I thought that's what she said.
So let me ask a couple of questions, Kurt. So um these funds would be the same or similar funds to what we've always received? It's just a new allocation for new years?
Next two years. Um I, you know, we're looking at expanding our demand response service. Once county budget is approved, if we can work it out to to match our routes as far as ours. I've got that calculated in. Um I will tell you right now, over the last, so far fiscal year to date, we're averaging thirty more trips a day. So we have been extremely busy.
And then.
And my county tax ask, though, I'm projected to be right at that two hundred thousand, maybe a little under, a little over. Once we all send down, we get all the reimbursement back, my tax ask from Scottsbluff County total will be somewhere around two hundred thousand for the year. My payroll is over seventy thousand dollars a month.
Right. What is your, what was last year's ask?
Uh this year's year-to-date, I have last year's.
Well, this year, what's this year?
This year, right now, if I were one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six, eighty-four, and if I average that out and add the and calculate the rest of it, I come up with just right at two hundred and three thousand dollars.
That's where we're at. So that's where you're gonna finish.
And that's projected.
Is that for two? Okay, that's projected.
That because that's based on my monthly, I have a monthly amount and I'm just.
That's what you're averaging till the end of June.
Yeah.
And so what did you, what are you saying you had budgeted for fiscal year?
For the next fiscal year?
For this one we're in.
For uh one point nine, I don't have any expenditure, I think it's one point nine and some change.
So what you're saying is that the tax asking amount is the same or slightly, very slightly higher?
Might be slightly higher. A lot of it depends on, again, with these vehicles, there, if I ever get these four new buses in, which will come to this next part of the, my next uh item, but if those ever come in, hopefully that will help. Right now, we're, you know, new catalytic converter on two of them was a chunk of change. Again, that stuff, we get ninety percent of it reimbursed. Um the only thing we don't get reimbursed at the ninety percent rate is my drivers' and dispatcher's wages and benefits and fuel and oil. The fuel, we'll be coming up for bid there. Hopefully, we'll see some additional savings there with gas prices coming down for our next go-around. That has been.
So when do you bid first, Kurt?
I think we started in July, May, or it's between May and July.
It was like, I thought it was like May.
I was May and then we actually didn't get the facility up and running until July. So we'll be coming up for bid there and we can kind of look at the same thing there. We don't have to bid it, we could do like Steve does.
How are you doing with your uh your projection? Are we still under yet or?
Yeah, I I for fuel, I think I'm I'm actually quite a bit under. I might have to really dig into the to the numbers, but we're, I mean, it's Saturday and it depends, but I'm really close on what my projected revenue was and my projected tax ask. And that's um, all the changes gone on in Medicare, we did lose a number of really good-paying Medicaid cus- uh clients that were passengers in wheelchairs and they have moved or passed away. We're doing a lot more at the schools now to help offset some of that. And there's still uh a good chance, we're still working to to keep those Medicaid numbers up. Because that comes straight off what the county has to pay. So, but this is, like you said, it's it's a number, but it's not a number that's tied to anything strictly for the county budget. Until we get our, my budget approved in our budget under budget sessions. So if if that, I would just um ask for a signature from the board for for this resolution. So I can complete my application to the state.
I'd move we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, go ahead and vote.
I didn't need to fall asleep, Kurt.
You're alright.
Now you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and vote.
Can you, can you say the the number you said I, it was the county's, what the county pays to support the budget? And then you also said what the monthly payroll was.
My monthly payroll for transit, when I submitted, is over seventy thousand dollars. At the end of the year, actual tax asking from Scottsbluff County residents is about tw- two hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot, it's all federal, it's all tax money, but a lot of federal dollars coming back into our economy. And some state.
So. So the vote is five zero and um the motion carried. So let's go to the next item. The next item is discuss and consider a resolution approving a of a five-year contract with Route Match Software LLC for scheduling and dispatching software for Tri-City Roadrunner and authorize the public transit manager to sign and contract by direction of the Board of Commissioners. Kurt?
Yes. Okay, so this contract, um I sent it all to you gentlemen, it breaks down the five-year, actually, it's a startup cost plus the next five years. It has been reviewed by NERMA. We should be good there, they had no objections. There were some some sticking points with the state on some limitations of liability, which honestly um in discussing it with the NERMA Legal and um others, they said, you know, there's always a certain amount of liability in doing business. So you're you can't, it can't really absolve anyone of total liability. Anyway, if you if you're looking at page, if you have the contract in front of you, there is a a chart breaking down the costs on page ten. Um our initial startup costs um for this contract is fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. I'm also, I'll also be purchasing some additional hardware to mount the tablets in the buses, some additional tablets um that will that will fall under that startup cost. The state has allocated about sixty-four thousand in remaining CARES Act funds. That startup cost is covered at a hundred percent. We don't have to come up with any money for that. Then if you look through year one through year five, there are increases each year. First year's only thirty-five thousand and some change, then it goes up to just shy of fifty-eight thousand. Again, county's portion of that is ten percent. So we're currently, we've been on month-to-month with this company for three years now, since they had the Uber buyout and then the TripSpark buyout. So we're currently paying um just under twenty-two thousand dollars a year. With this, it will jump up. We're adding uh two additional user licenses for our office staff. Uh we only have four and if I need to get in to pull reports and I get dispatchers logged in, I have to boot them out of the system. Uh it's, we we need additional licenses for the um admin staff. Uh it's giving us four additional vehicle licenses. Each tablet in a vehicle has a license to use it. We'll be adding a notifications module. It's like your doctor's office, you'll get either a call or a text reminder that you have a trip scheduled, trying to cut down on cancels at the door, no shows, people forgetting they have a trip scheduled. Uh there'll be a uh user-facing app and web portal for our demand response services where people can book a trip on their phone or on a portal. Uh it will, it will also tell them when their bus has been dispatched. The My Ride app is for our fixture out. Uh it's tied into our G- GTFS data, which basically, like Google Maps, it has every bus stop. And if somebody's looking for the closest bus stop, it'll tell them where it's at. If they're at the bus stop, it'll tell them how far away their bus is. Uh it'll give us mobile data management. If we're having an issue with a tablet or maybe a new driver's having some some problems with the tablet, we can remote in, just like IT can remote in your computer and we can walk them through it, we can look, find error messages and work with uh tech support to get those fixed. And then there's a uh another feature called Transit Miner. It's a real-time performance dashboard that gives you uh key performance indicators. We can see slack time for drivers if they're you know, if they haven't called in in a while, we can see that they're sitting idle. It'll track all of our fixture update on our on-time performance, all that information. It'll also allow us to do some things like um one of the instances we thought of is uh say like um Tevita, we have all their dialysis patients that we take, quite a few of them and they know they're always waiting for us to show up. Well, if we're running late or that person cancels at the door and doesn't call then, we can actually build them a dashboard with all their pass, with all of their clients that we transport and it'll tell them onboard, cancel, whatever, to help them so they can maximize the use of their beds and their machines up there. You know, some of these other modules, like the the scheduling module, we do all the transportation for the village. They fax us over a list every day. We can have them go into the portal and build the trips in and send them to us. As long as they don't, we don't have any issues with that, we approve them, boom. Automatically pumps them into the system and populates it. So for for the price increase, it's building in a ton of efficiencies. And and realistically, again, if you look at these numbers, uh on that contract, it's ten percent of that. We get ninety percent of that back. So um all in all, uh it's a five-year agreement. Um I think it's gonna be really add some efficiencies in. And as the population ages and you have more tech-savvy boomers, these are gonna be some things that, like you're just talking about using your phones when you travel. It's just gonna be an additional use of technology to um building some efficiencies.
So our total cost is going to be how much?
Well, for the.
For five years?
For five years, the total contract will be ten percent of three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So thirty, just thirty-two thousand dollars for five years.
Six thousand here.
Um so um again, it's it I'm kind of a, you know, I'm a I'm a big proponent of what we do and I think if we can do this for folks, uh the the amount of phone calls we receive on a daily basis, where if we can train the users to use these new features, it's gonna save us a lot of time and a lot of hassle and help keep us from having to add additional schedulers and and dispatchers and all that. We can take a lot of stuff and use technology to offset that.
Does that run a ledger of calls then? So you know who are our contacts? So if you know who contacted and you have record of them?
It, when we do this, when we get this go-live, they'll come in. Um most of the stuff will be done remotely because we have the main software in place. They'll teach us how to set the notifications module, we'll work the the passengers if they prefer a phone call or an SMS text message and and get, work with them. It's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of public education, so teach them how to use it. Um but turn their notifications on, it'll tell them your ride's been dispatched. We probably get ten, fifteen calls a day. Hey, is my bus on the way? That's ten or fifteen phone calls that hopefully we can, we can eliminate. So um just making our staff more efficient with a lot of this stuff. So um again, my uh my resolution that I proposed would allow me to go ahead and sign this contract. Um I'm waiting on some quotes on that hardware to add to the total for the state, but then they'll pay the hundred percent of that, but part of that is getting this contract signed for the startup costs. So um I can read the resolution, you have it in front of you. If you'd like, I could sure read it.
I don't see any.
I think we all have copies.
Yeah, we all have a copy of it, but uh.
It's on the website.
What's that?
And it's on the website, in your packet.
I can't hear it.
It's on the website.
Oh, okay.
In your packet for today.
Alright. So I did notice that this um allowed for the public transit manager to sign. And so when I look at that, so you're talking on a three hundred thousand dollar contract over five years, our part being thirty-one thousand and from a technical standpoint, I don't really have a any significant problem with that. And I just wanna be sure that that's is that the way we typically do things? Is there an amount that typically um needs to be talked about with commissioners or?
And don't we have a software?
Part part of the reason that I decide is because if you look on page one of fifty-nine, I will be the project manager essentially, or the key point of contact for it. But.
And you wouldn't be signing it, of course, unless we had approved it.
The resolution would have to go with it. So to me, that kind of clears up if there is a procurement limit. You have approved the contract, you're just approving me to sign the contract.
And then you and I both know where I stand.
Oh, absolutely.
And um so I'll be looking at that number at budget time when you talk, look at how much ta- tax asking money that you're looking at. And it'll be a big deal with me. Last year, I thought you did really good.
I came in well under budget.
And so I thought that it was fantastic.
And that is my goal every year.
No problem with any of that. And with the but you know that that's the number I'm always looking at. And so if that changes significantly upward, then I'll start to get a little more excited.
And I'll bring you data that, like I said, we're doing um well, our our average trips uh per day last year were one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-six. We're averaging over one hundred and eighty trips a day this year, fiscal year to date. So we are busier. And so that's gonna take a little bit more expense, but we're we're doing everything we can to drive additional revenue.
I'm convinced of that and in agreement with that, that it appears that buses have more people in them and that that you're busier. So I do like that part of it.
Kurt, who installs this software for you? Do you do this?
It's all cloud-based. It's all cloud-based, so they they build in the notify, the modules on the backend. And then those will set up some Zoom trainings to do all the training on it.
So bytes has nothing to do with it?
No, and I I have, I've had them in the loop to make sure that if there's any issues with any type of firewalls or just any of the the IT stuff that I'm not a brainchild on, I've already had bytes in the loop on it. And then their implementation team will reach out directly to the bytes folks just to make sure that we're not gonna have any issues.
Firewalls for them. Police said it didn't need to go through the IT committee where Bytes wasn't really installed or managed.
Yeah, it's all cloud-based, so.
Alright, any other discussion? If not, uh this is in the form of a resolution? Is there any motion or action?
Well, I've moved that we uh approved the resolution for a five-year contract with Route Match Software LLC and authorizing the public transit manager to sign said contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution? Any other?
I'm not siding with you.
Any other uh discussion?
I was um just thinking with with the new administration and the DOGE working pretty hard. Are we, is there a loss of funding clause in that contract? So the county's not on the hook for all of that money? In the case that funding for transit doesn't continue for the feds?
We're not, we're not grant-funded. I can't say there's a clause in there. Um but we're from all the, from our CTA, which are national organizations and and visiting with uh you know, the NERMA Legal, NDOT, they don't foresee any issues with funding because it's tied to the Surface Transportation Act, which deals with highway funding and everything. So they uh and and that's actually the bipartisan infrastructure law. I believe, I'd have to look at the, when this next one runs out. But if there's a, if there's a gap or an overlap to the next funding bill, it's maybe a year, year and a half, I believe, at the most. And again, we we'd only be on the hook for the ten percent of that, should that happen, but I don't foresee that happening. Public transit is uh huge and needed in the United States, so.
So the whole thing is based on on our participation with the ten percent? And if that were to go away to address what Charlie is saying, is there an out, is that?
Yeah, if we're if we're, if we're out of business, we're out of business. Good luck getting it from me.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Well, I I think Charlie brought up a really good point, Ken just touched on too, which really brought my attention to it. We we should have some kind of an agreement with them. So if the state does back out, that we're not on the hook for the three hundred.
This is an agreement between us and Route Match. All the state is agreeing to is their ten percent match.
So that's all they're agreeing to.
And they have the FTA funds already set aside. This is part of that operating agreement, is the money to cover that. Federal eighty percent.
So if it doesn't happen, then?
And the ten percent.
If it doesn't happen, we don't have a contract anymore.
Right.
Basically, yeah.
So it, that's all built into that two-year operating agreement you just approved me to apply for is
Okay.
the eighty percent federal, the ten percent state for this. This is considered, strangely enough, it's considered non-operating, but we need it to operate.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll um. If not, we'll, um, go ahead and vote.
We have five yeses.
All right, the motion's carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Um, the next item is discuss budget process for twenty-five, twenty-six due September thirtieth. Lisa?
Okay, I'm bringing forward this, bringing forward this topic because last year there was some discussion regarding the fact that we go through a budget process in August. Our fiscal year begins July one. And if, how do you, if there was ways you want to see presentations sooner, when would you want them? I would need to start asking for budgets sooner than later. And I will preface any comments by saying if you were truly having a work session March thirty-first, that might be an excellent topic for your work session, so.
I'll go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you go.
I was just gonna say it, it was brought up and it's been brought up more than once. The quicker we can get started on it, obviously, the more we can get done without having to be pushed to the end.
Yeah, last year was especially, um, difficult because you had such a protest, a long protest period and then so this was just more, more long meetings. So wanted some thoughts and I guess I wanted to get it in your minds.
Okay. The, uh, I know that I'm the one that has mentioned this on more than one occasion. And a, a couple of things, um, I was hoping to be able to bring some thoughts to this meeting, but quite honestly, I spent most of my time working on other issues in the agenda. And, um, I know you were busy as well. But I would be interested, um, maybe, um, if we do a meeting on the thirty-first or even the next meeting, um, would you be able to get for us what you normally send out to the elected officials and department heads? What you ask for and how you do it? That might help me a little bit and then-
Look at the prior assembly look.
Yeah. Uh, looking at it now so that we can kinda see what she asked for and what kind of time deadlines does she normally have? And that type of thing. Cause I know one of the other issues that we need to help you with is those deadlines pushing for people to get them in on a timely basis because you don't get them timely.
Okay, I'll bring my, I'll bring my last year's email. I mean, I just get, say an email, it's budget time, please update your spreadsheets with your proposed new year figures. And here's some stuff to start thinking about for the personnel costs and stuff. Yes, sir.
If it's as simple as that, that's fine. But if you could send us whatever you have, that'd be great.
Okay.
Before we send those emails, I, I think we should have that work session. This board has operated very efficiently when we have set goals for the budget process first. Uh, when we've, when we've, um, I know a lot of people don't like that, but when we set goals, we get results. And, uh, so I would like to have that work session. We do have the huddle up, um, uh, what do we call it? The, uh, um,
Meeting.
With, with the huddle up contract, we, we get an hour or so with the consultant as a follow-up to, um, everything they've done for us. So even though we're two months, just, sorry, two years past, if being delivered the final report, we haven't utilized that follow-up. So we get a, we get a one-hour Zoom with them. They can talk to commissioners. They can talk to the sports council. They can talk to the tourism committee. Um, and that is tentatively scheduled for that day. Um, so that work session could go, I'm sorry, the budget discussion should go, could go before or after, but tentatively that's scheduled for five P M. For, uh, the huddle up.
Twenty-sixth.
On which date?
On thirty-first. Thirty-first. All right, was that the?
The fifth Monday of March.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first. And that's the, you would ask a week or so ago to have a work session on the thirty-first?
All right. And that's, you know, that's kinda stuck as a, as a set timeline, you know? We get what we paid for. So they're not gonna, it's not gonna be a three-hour discussion. It's gonna be a, um, set timeline, set, set timeframe. And so we can do budget discussion afterwards because we know when we're gonna, we're gonna know when we're gonna end. We don't know how long the budget discussion is gonna be, so I don't wanna put that in front of it. My thoughts.
Great.
Yeah, that's a good, good thought.
So we could hopefully discuss those budget things at that time.
Okay.
On that same day if we could.
And what I'd like to do is set the goals at that meeting and then present those goals to the budget makers and see how close we get to.
And we, obviously, that we haven't heard from the state exactly what budget's gonna look like this year. It could look a whole lot different and how we even move forward with it. We're expecting sessions, NACO's gonna be putting together sessions probably in June, I think, is what Jeff Schreier from the Auditor of Public Accounts told us. So with the, we, we've heard that word zero-based. We've heard exemptions for certain areas. So we have a lot to learn.
And then there, in June, there's county board stuff in Kearney and tied to the Clerks Registered Deeds and Election Commissioners, a joint meeting to hear from Jeff also.
Do you know the date? I haven't heard too.
I think the fourth, wasn't it?
The, I believe so.
I think it's the fourth.
That sounds right. That's what I'm referring to.
Yeah. You, Lisa and you guys need to know that. So then with this work session, if anybody asks for decisions, action items, is that added to that? Is that allowed in a work session? I have all five of them here. Is it a work session or is it just the county board's meeting? Will you think on that? They're, they're planning a meeting on the fifth Monday of this month.
Is that where you want the work session to be placed?
That's what they're telling us.
Just the work session, yes.
Well, if somebody has an action item, are we allowed to add that to the agenda is my question.
As long, as long as it's advertised, everything can.
I'm advertising the meeting as a work session.
It is a discussion.
I know that's what I need before I have a lawyer to ask.
If there's things that need to be handled as a work session, it's on the agenda. Yeah.
So that's a discuss and consider thing, what can they vote on?
Let's let you, I, I would only suggest this. Let's let you get with Jason, find out how the exact wording should work. In my opinion, you ought to include whatever language to be able to make a decision. And that doesn't mean we have to, right? We can always not make a decision, but if we have language in there that says discuss and consider or whatever, then we can always not make a decision. Um, but let's have the ability to make one if we want one.
In case something comes forward that needs to address, we have the opportunity.
That's what I would suggest.
Yep.
Okay, so right now, again, we're looking at March thirty-first. I'm assuming, uh, Charlie, did you have a time on that?
So five P M is the huddle up follow-up.
Okay. So if we started our normal four-thirty time, is that sound appropriate for everyone? I would think so.
You're not gonna have enough time to do what you wanna do before five.
No, I'm not saying we'd be done with, with that, but if we started four-thirty at five o'clock, we would go to the-
At five, start the other meeting and then come back to Lisa.
If we need to go back, we can.
Include the huddle up in there after four-thirty, I got you.
So those, we have those two items on our agenda right now, the way I see it. There may be others added, but those two items for now.
As long as it's advertised, if you have items that you need to take action on, as long as they're on the agenda and advertised.
We'll be fine.
All right.
Right. All right. So I think that, um, gets us through that item about the budget. Um, the next item is time clock plus and payroll processes. Uh, any update, Lisa?
I had a meeting today. I spent about a one hour trying to get some information. We're gonna, we feel like it's working from the TCP side. Now I gotta work with MIPS to see if we can move certain groups over and get some other parameters put in TCP to move over. So, well, the first step, yes. It appears to be working. Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, that sounds better.
Does sound better.
Yeah. Um, any other questions on that while we're on the subject? All right. If not, we'll go to public comments. Um, the Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented this date. Um, so this is a chance for, um, public comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any item? Yeah, come forward, give us your name and spelling.
Evening commissioners, my name is Nicole Egan, N-I-C-O-L-E, last name E-G-A-N. I'm the marketing and promotions manager and off-site manager for Flyover Brewing Company in Scottsbluff, Nebraska. I wanted to provide you tonight with some comments in support of Brenda Lacy and her position as Scottsbluff County Tourism Director. I've had the opportunity to work with Brenda for several years on many events. Um, and I wanted to express my, um, pleasure with working with her and the benefits that she's brought to the businesses here in the valley. There's been several people here in the room tonight who had to leave because of time constraints. Um, one of them being Emporium Express, the other with Debbie Wagner with Bands on Broadway. Brenda's done some really great work with us and all of the businesses here have seen direct, uh, impact from the work that she's done. Whether it's from Balloon Fest, Colleen was also here, Restaurant Week Twenty-One, Ruby Doo Rendezvous, which has now turned into a flyover to flyover bike ride event. The NSA Boys and Girls Golf Championships, Legacy of the Plains Museum, Bands on Broadway, the Beef Beans and Bluegrass, Horizon Blue, uh, Horizon Music Festival, the Next Young Professionals Best of the West Beer and Wine Fest, um, and other events. Uh, Brenda has received Citizen of the Year Award in twenty-fifteen and she was recently honored at the February twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, recently honored at the Nebraska Tourism, February twenty-twenty-five as the outstanding event in towns with populations less than ten thousand for bringing the USA Cycling Gravel National Championships to our community, which brought one thousand riders and their families from forty-seven states and helped establish our community as a premier gravel riding and racing destination. She's had a direct impact on many businesses here and I just wanted to express, um, we've really enjoyed working with her. Um, and we're concerned that your action on your executive session may have a direct impact on all of our businesses.
Appreciate it. Others?
My name is Colleen Johnson, C-O-L-L-E-E-N-J-O-H-N-S-O-N. I'm the Executive Director of Old West Balloon Fest. I've worked with Brenda for the past eleven years. Um, this event was Brenda's idea to bring it here to re-inflate. She did have someone else helping her, Becky Horn, who was not present. Um, but Brenda has been a key player in our event. I know you all love your statistics, so we have been in existence for eleven years. Um, we track visitor, visits to Old West Balloon Fest through our event pass that we sell. We, um, attract six to ten thousand visitors from twenty-six different states and a hundred and eighty different counties in Nebraska. Sales tax collected during the week last year during Balloon Fest was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars over July and September. Twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars was collected in lodging tax for the weekend. Okay? Um, I really want you to consider all of the things that Brenda has done for our community. She gets in there and she helps. Not only does she bring those events to our area, but she also is a very key player in how things, um, work and also volunteering to help. Um, she was a key player in bringing the two thousand eighteen national championships to Scottsbluff County. And we just got the award again to host the championships between twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-eight. Without Brenda, this would not have happened. So I really want you to consider your decision this evening. Um, and I respectfully ask that you consider keeping Brenda.
Thank you. Anyone else?
As you know, I wear many hats. I wear hat for Legacy of the Plains. I wear a hat for Legacy Co-op. I wear a hat for Gary City Council, um, and every other organization I volunteer for. Um, I've worked with Brenda on several different things, the balloons, the bicycle race, um, the gravel grinder. We've been a sponsor of the balloons. We've been a sponsor of the, uh, national gravel race. A lot of the events that she brings in, we've been a sponsor of the golf tournaments. You know, bringing in the Class B state championships golf for boys and girls, that was quite a feat. And granted, it was a committee that did it and Brenda was a very integral part of that committee. So again, I hate to see you make another mistake. Um, I, uh, I just, I caution you to make another change because it's been nice to have somebody stable in that position for the last twelve years. And I think she has done a good job. I don't know all the particulars. We obviously don't. But I think from the business side of things, marketing side of things, I think she's done a good job for Scottsbluff County.
Thanks. Other comments? Again, this is, uh, time for public comment, whether it's on this subject or any other.
Can I ask Brenda to come up? Talk, um, speak on what you, the events you do throughout, over your, give us a list.
Shortlist, anyway.
We want the long list now.
Well, okay, well, obviously, as, um, Colleen mentioned, Old West Balloon Fest, um, uh, Monument Marathon Race Crew, um, and I'm on their, I help with their marketing. Um, some of these are older things, but you want just current things that we work on.
You did last year.
Oh, last year, okay.
You're not.
Um, Class B girls' state golf, Class Boy, Boys', state golf. Yeah, Class B Boy, that's a tongue twister. Um, I worked on the, um, NEDA legislative team. Um, I'm the past chairman of the Western Nebraska Tourism Coalition. Um, obviously, you know, we had the gravel race two years in a row and, um, I just happened to be at the right place at the wrong time, but if I hadn't been there, none of that would have been initiated for this county at all. Um, and then, um, as, um, Nicole mentioned, we did, um, win event of the year just a few weeks ago. Um, Restaurant Week, um, uh, multiple, I mean, just endless amounts of, um, uh, speaking events, you know, for different organizations, um, state organizations. I, I have spoke, um, for many different, um, event, like for events and also for sports, um, at, uh, state level, um, local level. Um, we work on both the FAM, which is familiarization tour, sorry, we use a lot of acronyms. Um, the FAM tours and then also, um, bring in the travel writers. And let me see here, I think that's all I wrote down. I, I mean, there's, there's so many things on a day-to-day basis.
Car shows and things like that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, well, I, I don't necessarily, so there's a little bit of difference between some of these things. These are things that not only we give money to, but I'm also a volunteer to make things happen for these groups. But, yeah, I mean, we, we give, um, money to, you know, the, the car shows. So, I mean, we're able to help them with, we- money to, you know, the, the car shows. So, I mean, we're able to help them with, we give them money for marketing, let me rephrase that. So, yeah, we're able to help them, um, a lot of these uh, smaller events like that, if uh, if we weren't here with this marketing money, it wouldn't exist. Creative District, I forgot that one, I'll add that to my list.
I imagine you forgot more than that.
Huh?
You probably forgot more than that.
I'm sure I probably did.
Okay, I just kinda wanted to rough.
Oh yeah, Warrior Run, see?
What is it?
The Warrior Run, I've helped with that, yep, so. Horizon Music Festival.
You made that bring in last year, remember?
I'm sorry?
How many did that bring in last, last year?
Um, I mean. Yeah.
A few thousand, lots of people, that place was packed.
Yeah, it was way, it was big.
It was packed, it was thousands.
We counted 13 though.
Yeah, I thought it was somewhere in the eight to 10 area. Um, I haven't read his report for a while, you know, you kinda read the information and make sure it met the requirements and then tuck it away and move on to the next thing, but. So, does that?
It helps, I just, you know.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I don't, you don't come in and tell us ever all the things you do. You come in and say, I need money for this, I need money for that. But you don't go back and tell us why I did this yesterday. You know, like, a lot of these guys come in and they fill out a report, they, they give us a report, a monthly or quarterly, we get a report. We don't get that from you, so it's hard to tell you. So, for me it is because I don't know the lot of this.
She gives you a report in your packet?
In the packet, I really.
Yeah.
It doesn't like, you two stand up there and tell us. A lot of them come in and tell us, you know.
Quarterly, do you come, do you come in personally quarterly? Is it, I was thinking that um, maybe that, that you did that.
Yeah, I, yes. Or anytime something, you know, happens, I know that um, you know, like if we get a grant or something like that, which I apply for tons of grants for marketing and stuff for our organization as well, not just accept grants from other organizations. And um, so I report those things, all the things that you need to know that I've worked on that have been successful.
Alright, that answer your question for now?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you taking that.
Yes, okay. Thank you, I'm glad I had a.
Anyone else? Alright, we're going to um, close the public comments section of the agenda. Um, we're gonna go to the next item on the agenda, which is Board and Staff Reports. So we normally start with staff. Ms. Kelly, we'll start on this side and then we'll go around this way in the room of staff.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? Sheriff? Um, any other staff back here? Brenda, I'm assuming you don't have anything at this point? Her?
Heather.
John? See, thank you. Um.
Jason.
Jason. Okay, Lisa? That went pretty fast, actually.
Almost made it.
Lot faster than normal.
We have our health fair scheduled tomorrow morning with lots of slots. If you wanna come and get a, a blood panel, and I think, but you have to fast, and it's nine o'clock, and after, I think, I know we got a lot of slots after nine o'clock. So, please come, visit the vendors, bring a couple of cans of food.
Is that for anyone on the health plan or just employees?
Employees and employees who ensure their spouse on our health plan. Their spouse can come, if that makes sense? So, yeah. And it's like, I think we include, we will, county will pay the $26 blood panel. If you want an A1C or a couple other specialized tests, you pay the difference, but we'll pay the basic panel.
Okay. Anything else, Lisa?
Not that I can think of right off the top.
Alright, we'll go to uh, Commissioners, Russ?
Okay, Road and Bridge, we got the new steel culvert in Southeast of Laurel. That was a 10 foot, like 50 foot diameter culvert. Uh, Aldo, uh, installed all that, went in really well, and it's uh, they're building the road on top of it now, and so it shouldn't be long down that bit open though. We got a, we had another thing this last Friday, I got a call, I got several calls. We have a farmer north of Laurel, north of uh, uh, county line, that's been, came here from Colorado, and he's up here plowing. And if you guys can imagine how much dirt is moving up there right now, and that sand, I mean, that's pure sugar sand. So, I went up there, I got called out, and I went up, and there's a lot of sand on the road, so I got Chris, uh, Fabriques to come out with me, and, and so he put a blade out there today and cleaned the sand off, cut in a new bar pit, so it has some drainage back. Cause I mean, it was, there was places where there wasn't much sand on the road. And it's closed Pathfinder Canal on the south side of that. And so, I came back and, you know, I didn't wanna bother any of you guys, and so I got ahold of uh, Scott Shaneman at NRD and asked him how he would proceed. And he said, I have the same thing going on down at Baird on Highway 26, uh, east of Mumon's Corner. And he said they, another guy did the same thing there, opened it up. And he said, it's total brown out. He said, the cars are having to stop and wait for it to clear up so they can continue down 26. He said, it's, there's something not gonna happen, you know, not gonna be right down there. So anyway, I, I went ahead and I got the number for the guy that owned the farm. And I called him, and he's an older fella from Colorado, and he has a farm manager, and these guys that are farmers are from Colorado, they, they've never farmed in this part of the world before. And so, I called him and I, after I talked to Scott, he had, you know, I asked him if I thought I was in my own lane by just telling him what's gonna happen as this proceeds, if we have to continually bring a blade out there, that we're gonna need to charge somebody if we, if we're out there more than, you know, once every, you know, three weeks. Cause that's about what our rotation is on our roads. So I let him know that, and I also told him, I said, you know, the other thing is, if there's a wreck out here, you know, because of the amount of sand that's on this road, it's gonna be on somebody else's insurance other than the county's, because I said, this, this shouldn't have happened. And this is Sioux County, the land that's blown onto Scottsbluff County. It's a Sioux County farm going across the county lines. And I, I was nice to the guy, and the guy was really nice. He said, well, let me give you my farm manager's phone number. And I said, you know, I said, I, I'm not a farmer. And I said, I, I don't want your farm manager's number, I need somebody that, who has the insurance policy on this place. I'm not gonna tell him how to farm. I said, you can tell him how you wanna farm, but that's not my job. I said, I, I'm just concerned about our roads and, and safety, and that's all I'm concerned about in Scottsbluff County. I just wanted to let you guys know what I talked about, what I'd said on that. And I left it, and like I said, the man was really nice, but his farm manager called me, spoke to me, and I just said, you know, you guys are gonna have to do something with it. I said, I don't know if you're gonna end up putting um, snow fence back in there 100 feet to catch that sand, because it's gonna continue to blow. We got four or five more days of wind coming in here. And you oughta, if you guys get a chance, you oughta drive up and see what farming in March looks like.
Anything else? Is it, Mike?
Well, I had a County Housing Board last week, and then I had, Friday had an Operation Clean Suite meeting, which is our combined community cleanup project for April 26th, as well as a after disaster cleanup exercise in drill. And then I also had a, I did a presentation to a local church, uh, uh, seeking volunteers to participate in the drill and the cleanup. And then this last Saturday, I had a uh, day-long training with uh, some first responders from various agencies.
Okay, appreciate it. Um, my primary meeting I had was Panhandle Public Health. It was a Zoom meeting, so I was able to do it from my own office. Uh, that's been this past week. One of the things that's um, still been important and a lot of information being disseminated is um, measles. And there's still some concern about that. I don't think we have any kind of significant uh, outbreak here in any way, but I did learn a little bit about how contagious it is, and it is serious, and we haven't had to deal with measles for a long, long time. Um, but everybody should at least be aware of the measles and what's going on there. The Panhandle Public Health uh, information online is helpful, and they've been advertising um, quite a bit uh, of information uh, locally. So, I just mentioned that, um, and that's, I'm gonna say that's all I have.
Have you had any updates on the current administration?
Um, we're having a meeting next week, and so I'll have some more maybe at the next week.
Is that open to, is there a chance I can go to that on next?
Yeah, and I'll, I can't remember if this one's a Zoom meeting or a in-person meeting, but I'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I had a couple meetings last week. The uh, Region 1 was pretty insignificant, actually. No, I shouldn't say insignificant, there went up a lot, stuff that went on there, the, the uh, disabilities are looking at purchasing a home, they, a home that they've been renting. Uh, and they own several of them within the area. Uh, so we had, that took up most of the conversation about what, what's going on with it. Uh, the state is doing some changing in leadership that affects, affects what these, what these folks do. Uh, when they get a new director in, for whatever reason, that seems to know more about the operation than people who have been doing it for decades. So they have, they have a lot of issue with things like that on their, their monitoring. They, they service a lot of folks, they do a pretty good job for around the areas. That's the only, the biggest tool that I have.
Charlie?
Well, over the weekend, I got this award, I wanted to talk, let you guys know about uh, called the Dundee Award. You guys are familiar with the, the TV show, The Office, you'll understand about it. Someone decided to decorate my truck and glued that to the hood, so. Um, cops are, uh, cops are writing the report, getting the video footage from the uh, neighbors who have video cameras in the alleys. Um, so, I just wanted to present the award that I got. And um, you know, I had TCD last week. I can't say enough good things about TCD. They're just moving in the right direction in my mind. You know, really working on economic development, really working on, you know, expanding their footprint. Uh, and, you know, housing is not, housing does not dominate their meeting discussions anymore. Uh, the housing discussion we did have focused on, uh, the Northfield Villas, which is, which are for developmentally um, challenged individuals, and it seems to be like a tremendous project. Uh, you know, that is the focus of their uh, housing efforts at the moment. Uh, so, and they've just been a tremendous partner for the, for the county. And, you know, I think that's, you know, PAD was last week, primary this time of year, it's, it's updates on legislative items. Um, I get the majority of my legislative updates, all of my legislative updates through NACO, that's what I mean, efforts are focused at the moment. Um, you know, this, this long session just doesn't move as fast as, as the short session, so I don't have a whole lot to report on yet. Uh, however, there is a constitutional amendment that they want to move through the legislature, and this would remove the inheritance tax um, in Nebraska. So, this is a, uh, for counties, it's a, it's a sca, it's a scary proposition, but if we were to, uh, all the other bills we've worked on in the past, address uh, address replacement revenue. So, yes, let's get rid of the inheritance tax, but also let's find replacement revenue. And a lot of those things are items that we already do, dock stamps, vehicles, you know, finding other ways to raise revenue. I think, I think the vast majority of county officials feel a certain way about the inheritance tax. Uh, but if that was to go away, we would need replacement revenue. As a constitutional amendment, it jet, it only removes inheritance tax. And there is no replacement revenue. So that is uh, that is the concern of NACO at the moment. I'm rather neutral on it, just basing my feelings on uh, inheritance tax. But, uh, death tax, I'd rather call it, but uh, replacement revenue is necessary. So, um, if you get a chance to, to read those emails that come in every Friday to update the legislature, uh, I think it'd be helpful. And that's all I got for the post.
So I'll just mention on that inheritance tax and it being a constitutional amendment, meaning it would go on the ballot.
Oh, thank you.
And it's a ballot initiative, um, is what's being proposed. And if it goes um, on the ballot, I would suggest that it would have a high probability of passing. And um, it does not provide, as you said, and I was just getting this from the NACO website, when um, it does not provide, uh, or would not provide for any other alternative funding. And um, I would just mention that because I would, if that actually does get put on the ballot, I would say that um, there's a high probability of a pass.
And the revenue for the county for an inheritance tax is in the high hundreds of thousands, not.
Seventy thousand-ish.
It's a signi, would be a significant loss to the county. Should've passed it last year. We had, you know, as the Vice President of NACO, I don't want to speak poorly of NACO, um, I said my piece in those meetings, and, and I thought we had a tremendous opportunity to uh, earn replacement revenue last year, and um, ultimately, you know, the bill didn't make it through, so, um, that's, that's real record.
What was the options on the replacement revenue, Charlie?
Oh, it was things like dock stamps and other, other ways that we, you know, services that we all, and marriage licenses and.
Stuff we already do.
Stuff we already do.
Jail fees.
So yeah, there was some suggestions from the state legislature that they would pay the counties, I think that was second, second, there wasn't, there was not.
Yeah, a certified copy of a marriage license costs $9. But the state can charge 17 for the same thing, if they do it.
So anyway, just be aware of those things. Charlie, being on the NACO Committee, um, keeps us informed typically of legislative things. We appreciate that, um, but if anyone else ever has some, let us know. So I think that takes care of that next item, which is legislation. Um, so the next item we have is an executive session for the purpose of a personnel issue. Um, and my understanding on this one is that, um, this would include um, the Board and uh, Jason, Ocean, and Lisa. And um, with that.
And there's been an update on that.
Okay.
In terms of a request for a public hearing has been made, so my recommendation would be based on the request that, that there not be an executive session.
Okay, so that this item wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to have an executive session?
Correct.
Okay.
I kept what we were, Jason.
How there's been a request for.
Well, that was instead of this.
Right, so if someone, if you receive a request, if the person, if, if, if a subject receives a re, makes a request for a public hearing, then that's part of the inception in the open meetings, I agree.
Can we discuss this? Okay, that's what I'm, I, I wanna discuss with Jason and Mark and myself. That was not how I understood. So, can we do that? I mean, they do that, they request.
I think yeah, two reasons for each other to session one, because it's a NACO one now with the, the legislature.
I'll go with the floor. That was just not how I had understood.
Where did the request for, for public hearing originate from?
From, from the person that received the notice of possible executive sessions, and if the. From, from the person that received the notice of possible executive sessions, uh, if the, if the recipient receives a, makes a request for a public hearing, then...
What, why can't we still have an executive session and then come out and be the public?
You're reading through the law. Yeah, so if, if the person that, if it's a personnel matter, the person that receives notice indicates that they want it public, then there's no basis for an executive session. So the idea with an executive session is that you go in to protect reputation or to not discuss what would ordinarily be confidential information. But if the person that receives the request indicates that they would rather have a public hearing, then there would be a need for an executive session.
We don't have anything on the agenda for a public hearing.
That's right, we have to reschedule.
That we reschedule.
So, if there's a separate agenda item that you have to decide whether you're gonna take it up this evening or in another time?
So, there are items in this personnel issue that put the county's reputation at stake and not just hers?
The, the final item is the one where we do an open session. Executive session should be handled exactly the way. We get down to the final item, that should be handled in an open session.
Well, the final item is, is an open session issue. The issue would be when you have something on the agenda for an executive session, if it's a personnel issue, and the person that receives notice that they're the subject of an executive session declines that and says, "I wanna have it in an open session", then you don't proceed with an executive session.
We don't have that on the agenda. Or does it not?
It'd be either, I mean, it's not all.
Then what is it not all?
The, the open session is not, you have an executive session.
Underneath, underneath it, the next line item is a, is a open session. So the issue would be whether you wanna proceed with an open session this evening.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, uh, request the, the, uh, I'm gonna request that Brenda rescends her request for a public hearing. Brenda has tremendous, Brenda has a resume that would shock. And I do not want to go into items of public session that might be in the media or perceived a certain way. Uh, I'm gonna re- I'm gonna request that we continue an executive session. We're gonna come back out here and be in public. And if Brenda won't, if Brenda won't grant that request, then my next request, and it will be in motion, is that we continue to go into, that we do go into executive session for the reason of protecting the reputation of the county and avoiding potential litigation. That would be a motion, if, that would be my motion if we, if we don't want it. My other question is, is, uh, well, wait, I think that question was answered.
I think I answered that.
So we, um, certainly have, um, had an issue in the past where, um, we thought we were going to be going into executive session and then the, um, person requested for whatever hearing was going to be, whatever was going to be discussed, to be discussed in open session. And, um, at that, uh, point in time, we didn't have anyone sitting in your position. Um, and we were up here winging it on our own. And my, um, my only thought process when that was all over was, you know, then all of a sudden we went ahead and had that, I'll call it, complete discussion, um, that night, um, right then. And in retrospect, I've said, why didn't, i- if we would've had counsel, they would've probably counseled us to, um, not continue with that item and that, um, because we weren't prepared for that. And, um, I'm not, at that time, we didn't even have any counsel available to us. And I was saying, we surely should have said, if that's the case, then we should put this item off until the next regular meeting. And I'm asking you, would that be appropriate here and, um, um, in an effort to meet the letter and the purpose of the law, um, would, would that be acceptable and doable in your mind?
It would, yes.
And that would be to not to continue with that item? And that we look at it, um, after you've been able to prepare, possibly some of us be more prepared in, in that direction, that if, if we're going to, what I'm gonna refer to as air our, uh, thoughts in public, that we're prepared to do that.
Yes.
And I'm not sure that I could say that I was fully prepared for that, um, and, um...
We haven't discussed any of these things.
Right.
Hard to figure out where we're at exactly.
Right.
So are you, um, okay with the thought that we don't discuss it tonight?
Yes, it could be, it could be, the last agenda item could be rescheduled for those reasons and scheduled on a...
Any other... I will call a special meeting tomorrow or Wednesday. I will call a special meeting, whatever we need to do as soon as we can. The county's reputation is at stake. We will advertise. We will advert- we will follow the, we will follow the law. Within a certain period of time, you have to declare emergency. You're gonna have a hard time saying why it has emergency. You're gonna have to swallow that. So what is the s- what is the soonest we can do a meeting?
The thirty first, we'll schedule, we'll schedule.
You can call a special meeting, which I don't have a public notice.
I'll say I don't have time to get it, get a paper.
And it all has to be over by the future.
Yeah.
And calling requires that we...
It's getting worse and worse.
Calling emergency, it's gonna be hard, it's gonna be a question, but we need to have others guess what the actual emergency is. And for someone in your, Brenda's position, it'd be hard for us to say, and if, that's why her status is an emergency, we can't.
What have we done already? I mean, we, we have, we have generic stuff going on here, and now all of a sudden we're bringing in an employee. We have named an employee. No, I, I'm not, I'm not telling you, I'm just, I'm just making, I'm just making a statement, uh, that we have an executive session for a personnel issue.
That's an, that's an old agenda.
That's, that's what came in my packet.
Mine too. The, the current agenda names the position. The current agenda names the tourism director.
On the second item.
That came off on the first one.
Yeah, but that's all right.
I, I don't know, how can I say it? The cat's already out of the bag, I guess? That, that we, that we, we know what the executive session is concerning.
Friday.
Yeah, that's the one I'm gonna off, this is the packet. So Jason, will you give me your suggestion again and, how, cause I, I believe your suggestion, explain how we keep some of these things in an, in an executive session?
So, with, with regard to an executive session for the purpose of a personnel issue, when a person, when an employee or personnel get notice of an executive session, requests that it be an open session, then the purpose of having an executive session for a personnel issue has gone away? Meaning that it needs to be done in a public meeting?
So, our agenda also states that we can call an executive session at any time for any lawful reason?
Yeah, and those lawful reasons would, would tend to be, you know, pending litigation or personnel issues that can affect reputation. And if someone receives notice of, of a personnel matter that can potentially affect reputation and says, "I would like that to be at a public meeting", then the lawful reason for the executive session doesn't matter.
Thinking back at the last one that we had, if I, if my memory serves me right, I believe the county attorney was sitting there.
I was gonna say, I thought so too.
I...
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly, but, but there, the, the person's attorney is the one who said, "My client", or whatever, however she referred to.
Wishes to be in...
Wishes to be in an open session. And that's why we did what we did, and they have that right to do that.
Sure they do.
They have that right to do that, and that's, that's why we went with it. Right or wrong, but that's how we went with it.
I'd like to see us do what Jason said, table this thing. You and Jason get on board, so you understand what needs to be talked about, this will be held in an open session, cover every base that needs covered.
I, I think if, um, if we're a hundred percent pair- prepared for that, including Jason and us, with any of the things that we wanna be prepared, um, to, uh, to go over and mention, um, we can do that, I think, um, uh, and if, if Brenda wants it that way, then she can have it that way. But, um, I think the, uh, um, yeah, the, the issues are, um, well, to me, they're kind of, I wanna say, there's some detrimental things possibly on both sides, I should just put it that way, that could be harmful to, um, herself and ourself possibly as well. But we can go over those and have a plan of action when we get ready to, to talk about it. But I thought we made a big mistake the last time, when on the fly, we simply said, "Okay, why don't we go ahead and do that"? And that was a big mistake. We should've been prepared before we had that discussion.
Always be prepared because it's their request. They can do it as soon as they find out that they're gonna be a part of it.
And I understand that, and we can say we're not gonna do it for two weeks, or whatever the next week is.
But, but following up with that, Mark, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, if that individual knows that that is, that that executive session is concerning them or that employee, then they have the right to say, "No, I want it done right here. I don't wanna go, I don't want to be in an executive session for you to talk about me unless we do it in a public meeting." And they have that, they have that right, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, right, okay.
And that's what we're facing right here, and in my opinion, we have an opportunity to say, "That's okay, but we don't wanna do it tonight."
Didn't work real well last year.
That's my thought.
It worked exactly the way it was supposed to work last time.
It did, well...
We didn't get sued.
Yes, you did.
We got sued and we won.
But it wasn't free.
Anybody can sue us at any time for any reason.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should, uh, just move forward with discussing considering action on the status of the tourism director.
Well, I, and that's exactly, I think, what we're talking about. Is if we don't do the executive session, we're doing that part of it, and if we're doing that part of it, it's exactly what we're talking about.
And you would have the option to take that up at another meeting?
It's one of the options we have, essentially.
Yes.
Right. I would certainly suggest that we do it that way in an effort for us to be fully prepared, Jason to be fully prepared for, and, uh, because I don't believe that any of us knew, um, of that thought or option. I mean, it's always a possibility as far as that goes, but I don't think we had any indication that that's where we were heading tonight. And because of that, I would suggest that we not hear that item, not take action on that item, not start action on that item, but we simply put it off till the next meeting. Are you, uh, I think I see you agreeing with that thought. Is that true, Jason?
That, that's an option that you have, if you're, if the concern is to be better prepared and with, with the time being a factor as well, to give sufficient time to hear it, you could make the decision to table that for now and then have it heard at a different date and time.
So unless, unless the employee rescends that request, then we can still go into executive session, discuss what needs to be done and then just follow this.
You'd have to list both items again, which we're gonna do at the end of the session, we couldn't just list them tonight. We're still up to this, both items, and see if we reject it at that point.
You, you could do it.
But as it stands right now, the, the employee is asking to do that discussion in an open meeting around the executive session. So unless that changes, nothing's gonna change for the next meeting, it'll still be held in an open meeting.
Yes.
Okay. But you're just suggesting that we will be, that we will be well-prepared when we get to that?
Yes.
So if we decide to go that direction, um, which I'm gonna recommend, then, um, the executive session for the purpose of a personnel issue, that's where we're at right now. What are we doing with that item at this point?
So, the recommendation would be you just not proceed with that item and then make a decision on the last item on the agenda, whether that would take place this evening or at another date and time.
So that executive session for purpose of a personnel issue, that we take simply no action on that item?
Yes.
Which would mean we don't have to take any action for, on that item?
So there would just be no motion to go into executive session, if that's what you choose to do?
Okay. Any discussion on that?
I think we're fine at that, for this, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, hearing no other, um, thought on that, we'll proceed to the next item, which is consideration and action concerning employment status of tourism director. And, um, what action would be appropriate here? Jason?
So there could be a motion made if the decision is to table that and have her at a different date and time?
Is the, uh, is an unclassified staff member... Are they... Are they, uh... There is no guarantee, there is no protection that they must receive. But we could move forward with action on this item other than taking it.
Well, the issue would be whether, whether the, the Board wants to take action. There could be a motion regarding that agenda item, whatever that, that may be. There are issues in the Personnel Manual if somebody is unclassified as to whether or not they can appeal that to the Personnel Board or not.
Correct. And according to the Personnel Manual, uh, unclassified staff does not have the protections to appeal to Personnel Board. And the Personnel Manual also defines her as a natural employee, um, does not have Personnel Board protections.
What, what's, what would be the difference between her and Steve there?
Nothing.
She has property interest.
So, so Steve, so Steve has...
Hold on, hold, hold, hold on, hold on. I think we need to go into an executive session to protect the county from a personnel issue. We have, we're, we have staff making comments that are putting this county in jeopardy in this meeting.
Where are you at on that?
Ordinarily, you know, that type of general issue would not, would not be the subject of an executive session.
I think that...
I'll make a motion to table just the la- the final item on the agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion to table that item? And does that allow us to bring it up at any time then, Jason?
It would need to be specified. Yeah, we can put back on it again.
I'm the only person that can bring it back to the agenda, I'm the person that made the table motion. So what we're suggesting with the executive session, Mark, is do anything with it, right?
We've already moved past that.
Yeah, that's going, yeah.
Well, on, on that item, yeah, that one's done. We're up to this one. And the motion at this point is to table this item with no, the last item, with no, um, particular date, but, um, we can deal with that later, I guess. We can deal with that, um, Charlie and Jason can talk about it and, and make a decision on it. Um, on how we're gonna do it. So we have a motion in our second to table this item. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, motion's carried, and this item's tabled.
Are we adjourned?
Oh, sorry. Yeah.